You good to go?
We're good. Falls on silent, kids.
Mr. Ellsworth wants to present to the board at this time. He's not on the agenda.
I am on the agenda.
He is on the agenda.
I would never come into a meeting like that.
I'm sorry.
I asked people to come in first because I have my own village board meeting. It's Mr. Ellsworth. I appreciate the accommodation. As a mayor, I've been here a number of times before you, but obviously there's a whole new slew of people that have not been made mayor by my client's proposal over the past several years. Back in 2016, my client presented petition to the village board to allow for special use permits to allow apartments above retail establishments in the CB district. As you know, my position is that the village board has not acted on that petition. I have spoken to your village attorney. I certainly respect his position. Mine differs from that. But what happened in that process is that petition, while you were mayor and it was a different board, obviously, was referred to the Village of Suffolk Planning Board under the requirements of your code. The village board could have ignored the petition and not acted on it at all, or could have referred it to the planning board for its review and its report back to the village board. And the planning board did that. In fact, the planning board went further and sought approval for your village planner to study this proposal with respect to the uses in the downtown district, specifically tailored around residences above commercial establishments. It's certainly been somewhat of a firestorm, depending on who you talk about. Some people want it, some people don't. I appreciate it. But what I'm seeking is for this board to act on something that it has on its table. It tabled something now for more than two years and have not acted on it. And you really only have two options, respectfully. You can schedule a public hearing under your code with respect to the petition and what is desired under it, or you can decide not to do that, but to not act severely prejudiced as my client. He's paying me to seek a zone change. If the zone change is not permitted or rejected by this board, then I have certain rights, or my client has certain rights, there I am, specifically for it. And I'm not saying that to make any threats to this board. I'm just telling you that I'm stuck, I'm handcuffed. The purpose behind the petition and your planner's report, which is in your file and is fairly thick, highly recommends a zone change. It highly recommends the special permit to allow apartments above commercial establishments. Doesn't say everyone gets to have it. It says that the village board, or the planning board, or whomever the statute would allow, would, on a case-by-case basis, determine after the criteria has been set whether residences should be allowed. Mr. Barone was on the zoning board when my client came before you twice. And there was discussion at that point by the village zoning board and by the attorney that a special use permit should be sought. That was not the proper avenue for a zoning board of appeals matter. So this is where I am. We've got half of the business owners in Suffolk, or half of the owners of buildings in Suffolk, with space above benefiting with rentals because they're pre-existing non-forum. And the other half, most of them are empty. There's a disparity between these people, and you're going to lose them. You're going to lose these people or all these buildings because they're not making the money that they want to make. And if they're going to make the money that they want to make, they're going to pay more to you or your treasurer. And the village is going to improve. Your planner said it. Your planner said this is the future. The change of the zone back whenever it occurred, maybe there was not enough foresight. Maybe everyone thought the future was sprawling. You look around at every village. Every village is trying to bring people back in. Suffolk's preventing that by not acting on this. I need this to be put, replaced on your agenda. And for someone to say yes or no, make a motion and deny it. Make a motion and say you don't want to proceed with a public hearing. At least my client isn't being stagnated or handcuffed by inaction by the board. That's all I need to say.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Next on the agenda is the CSEA memorandum of agreement.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
So we have the, I know we've loaded all the information in regards to the CSEA MOA.
So what the board is seeing now are the draft resolutions that would be prepared if we move forward, so additional, but they do have all the materials.
Right. We have the resolution. So does anyone from the board have any questions in regards to the MOA at this time? I mean, we still have until next week to address it if we need to. Okay. Next on the agenda is I'm going to request an executive session. We have an agenda and a committee to discuss personnel matters, in particular, to particular persons in the Village of Suffolk at the end of this meeting. We spoke about Richie Ellsworth. Next is the public hearing. A continuation of the public hearing will be held at 7:05 to consider a local amendment section 254, code of the Village of Suffolk, entitled Highway Traffic Article 8, scheduled 25465, 15 time limit parking to reflect time limit parking in the Central Business District. We've been going through this for a while. If there's any other further questions, we can address them here tonight. And also, the second public hearing for February 3 at 7:10 for review and amend the entire chapter, which is a bit larger undertaking.
So to go over the history for the new board members, we've been working on these local laws for some time now before your term. And we spent a lot of time, we being myself, the mayor, Joe Hunt, Charles Wiki, Clark Osborne, and Rob Magrino, looking at the different laws that are in place, what was codified, what has changed that wasn't codified, and what is the current reflective parking conditions in the Central Business District, especially considering the Sheldon as a building that wasn't considered when the law was previously updated. So this particular law, which I have as local law through, depending on if it's passed on Monday, would reflect strictly the time limit parking, which was the original scope of the project, in the Central Business District, and incorporates the concerns that were raised by the board regarding parking and traffic conditions, especially during rush hour, near and around Lawveut Way. So this is to formalize that piece of the process, Central Business District. We've talked about it for a period of time. Rob Magrino is not here tonight, but he and I talked about combining local law three and the proposed now local law four, trying to do it all together. But he felt that, considering that the board has made concerns raised, that we stick with two separate local laws, the first being the one that's proposed as local law number three. So does anybody have any questions?
It's only for these streets. It's not for the other streets that were on the last meeting, right?
That's the second. Well, I'll go over that one secondly, but...
Okay. So it's just these that are on this list?
Correct.
Thank you.
So the biggest one, I think, during the public hearings that were raised is that Lawveut Way was originally put in as a 15-minute parking to continue, so that we had flow of traffic through that area. And hearing the concerns of residents and the input of the police department, it's probably more conducive to a 45-minute rather than a 15-minute in its location. So that is really the biggest change from where we started to where we are now. The 15-minute was changed to 45 minutes in front of 92 Lawveut Way, beginning 12 feet more of the driveway entrance, and that's two spaces.
That makes it more convenient for residents there that aren't by the building, in and out, whatever they're doing, if they're not going into their parking garage. 15 minutes was a little tight.
Is that overnight is allowed there, right?
No, no overnight parking. No. Overnight parking in the Central Business District is not allowed. The only overnight parking that's allowed is by permit, and it's currently in the lot A, which is the next estate farm. Okay. The next one, local law four, you have, it's a lot of material. The reason that we're looking at chapter 254 in its entirety, so they don't have that. They have it on the materials. So I'm just speaking to what I had sent to you previously. This one came about because it was raised as a matter in the court that the description of the parking lots in the code do not match the description of the parking lot on the parking summons for violations. So what's on the summons is what we call it now, and the history behind that was back in September 11th, following that tragedy. Certain parking lots were dedicated in memory of Suffolk residents, and in that process, some of the lettering changed in the parking lot. That was captured as an event that took place in the Village of Suffolk, but not reflected in the code. So to make the code match with what the actual names and titles are of the parking lots and as well as to reflect it in the code, we looked at that. So when Clark and I started looking at that, we said, wow. Because we started digging into all, so if 254 in the description of the parking lots was outdated, what was outdated? And we just went back through, and me, myself, Christine Anderson, and Rob Magrino have been working on. And we have to you already a draft form of the entire chapter 254. So anything that is passed in local law three, which is Rob Magrino's recommendation, would be incorporated in the new local law, because we're passing one first and the other one would reflect that as well. But it would clean up the entire parking issue for the Central Business District. It would clean up no stopping, no standing, U-turns. It hits everything. So trustee Megan Corrigan, we talked about you taking another look, and I also have the deputy clerk looking at the list of the addresses in your area. If you could really look at that and see, does this make sense?
I'd love to. Thank you.
So take a look at that. So that's what the next public hearing is going to be on Monday. So Monday, we have, we've already closed the public hearing. We've got local law three that you're going to vote on. The second one would be starting a whole new process, and that would be opening up a whole new public hearing going from there.
Okay. So you want me to look at what you gave us in the last meeting?
Yeah, the entire chapter 254, that one.
Actually, you had concerns of POC, right?
POC.
That's one of them. Yeah, just because I know that one the best.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But if you use that one as a foundation and say, if that makes sense for POC, what does the rest of them say? Does that make sense?
Yeah, because even on East Maple, there's parking on both sides of the street. There's no way you're getting a fire truck down that street. And I've said it over and over and over and over again.
Right.
And you can't. There's just no way.
And that's why everybody really needs to take a look at it, because they're seeing it from different perspectives.
So if you had an idea also, if you bring that forward, to have the chief of the fire departments also analyze it to see what their thoughts are, if you have any thoughts to any of the streets that you all, you know, I believe you know right off the bat which streets are going to be tight, either to turn, or to run down, we call it POC, that would be helpful for us all, so.
I'll do that. I'll send that to them.
Yeah.
Just looking back a little bit, probably before maybe some of the board, involving the board at all, unconnected place we did that, we had both sides, and we actually had an incident down there, and actually serious, since we couldn't get an ambulance, so it was a force of suicide, so that's when we changed it over.
So we have to identify, before we...
So we've done it before.
We have to identify most of the streets that we can't...
Start by again, just look at all, I know we get there for that reason.
Now the opportunity, we're looking at the whole thing to see, does this make sense for us now?
How long was Boulevard like that?
Boulevard's been pretty good for a while.
I mean, since I've been here, I think it's...
Yeah.
All the way on one side, right?
It's been since I think, yeah, it's been a while.
I walk down there a lot. There's not really any problem.
No, but I know it's like only POC being the whole length on one side.
Yeah, Maple, it also went to the power, and all that stuff. I know, pretty...
East Maple stuff.
It is. I agree.
And I also want to highlight the concerns on Ramapo Avenue, because its local law four, the new one that's being opened up if it's passed as such, would now incorporate no parking on Ramapo Avenue the entire length, because the only place that we're allowed parking is right across from the...
Rainbow.
Yeah, the Rainbow Building. From the train station. And that's causing what trustee Gerardi brought up, the congestion and the walking and the backup and all. There's too much activity going on when there's that train change during rush hour, and that's one of the issues that we felt would alleviate some of the, you know, going on.
Definitely a hazard on that one.
You remember, it actually changed when I was looking at it. You come up to a bridge, you go right to the left, if there's a car, which was two of them, there's a van and a car in the front of it, you have no choice but to go any other way.
And you're going over the...
And because you come out of turn, there's not much time to react. So fortunately, it was out, but I got a weird death.
The other thing is, chief pointed out that what we weren't capturing is the no stopping and standing under the bridge. So this, because we couldn't enforce it, it wasn't listed.
Right. That's not even in the code. It's not, the sign did she say, but it's not the code.
Correct.
Right.
That's one of the issues we had.
That's something that definitely has to be addressed.
Absolutely.
Amy, I spoke when I said overnight before. When I look at the Lawveut Way on the previous one...
Yes.
The other ones say 15 minutes and two hours thereafter. Does that need to say two hours thereafter?
It's funny you said that, yes, and I picked that up. It should say to, has on the newer ones that I have. Yes, it most definitely does. And that's one of the things when we're all looking at it, because if you don't say, and two hours thereafter, that means they can park for as long as they want. And that may be conducive in your more residential areas. Why would you not want to let people park in front of their own properties? But in some areas, it was done, I believe historically, to not make it easy for people to park on the side streets and not park in the municipal parking lots. And now you have a vehicle who's riding the train or the bus, and there are vehicles there all day long. So somehow you have to balance between being able to enforce it, right, and being able to accommodate the needs of the resident. And one question, chief, that came up, which I couldn't answer, was, well, how do you designate if the vehicle is a resident or not? But I think if there was an issue when the police car, because the parking enforcement hates only to Central Business District. So if we're talking about side streets, they're not going to do it. So they wouldn't have that mechanism anyway, but you wouldn't know that's a resident.
I think the issue, this has come up many times before, this situation, followers, we can't synergize as residents on residents of public street. So if it's really a law change, it's either everybody gets it or nobody gets it. That's come up many times. We've talked about people who bought it in the past, and...
Especially in Westwood, they wanted a sticker.
That's exactly. There was a sticker, and I said, listen, it's all fine and dandy until someone gets a ticket in the public street. But we should be able to fund it, you know? If money comes from that, a lot of times, we have to be very careful.
And you have to balance it, because if you don't have two hours, how are you ever going to enforce it? Because guess what, then? You wouldn't know who's moving, coming, going, or whatever. So it's a fine balance. That's why everybody has to...
It should be balanced, it should be, because a lot of discretion involved, which you guys obviously use, and that's what it puts down to make it work the right way.
Right, because some people would come up to me and say, well, what's the difference between Sylvan Way? I can park all day long on Sylvan Way, but I can't park all day long on Park. What's the difference? So people are looking at things like, what's, just because I'm that far removed from the train station means I get to have extra parking in front of my house if I have people over? So it's a balance.
Yeah, I mean, those residential, you selfish for a minute, but Chestnut, you've got one side where the condo is, you're not allowed to park. The other side also says you can't park in front of the homes, but it's really not enforced. But I mean, I remember where that's going to, on Chestnut.
Well, this means it's...
Not Chestnut, sorry. Crosshores.
Oh, Crosses. Crosses on the list. We've got to look at Crosses.
Yeah, you got all the homes that, you know, they need the parking, and you guys have acknowledged that, but...
But I think that, because on your side, say, is no parking, right?
That's what it says, yeah.
No parking, and on the other side, there is parking.
That's the problem, is there is no parking there on the building side, which would be the south side, because there's no parking.
No parking. No parking on your side.
It's marked as no parking, but...
Oh, a label, yeah.
But it's residence, house.
Because it's all residence to residential house.
I'm the person to tell you, we've not been there on plates, we're not a stakey, because you know, when I look at the residence side...
We don't want to do that, but we did have this discussion a few years ago, I don't know which chief was there, and I thought the discussion was leading to the access for the fire truck.
There was a fire coordination...
Access the building with the ladder truck, or something along those lines. Chief, maybe...
There would be fire...
There's some of the wires on there.
So that's a big question.
You can make the building, the cross street building, if you're in the street. If they stay where they are now. Yeah.
So the brick can be parked in the middle of the street?
Yeah. If there's a fire, we're taking up the whole street, ain't you know?
Yeah. But would it be wise to allow parking on that east side of the street, I believe?
Some of it, some of it you can't because of where the fire department connections are for the building and stuff.
No, on the other side.
On the other side.
I mean, that's the way it is. I mean, you guys, you got to tell us.
Yeah, we can look at it.
Yeah, take a look at that also, because that has been brought up numerous...
That's, I agree, Mike. I think the only reason we didn't do it is because we wanted to work with these guys and do it on camera. Whatever's good for them followed us, I just, we want to make sure...
Right, we got to make sure that it's safe at the end. Right, if you want to get in there and raise the ladder or whatever...
We'll have to take a look at it.
Okay. All right.
Is there something that we could put in, and I don't know if this is allowed or not, but no parking for more in the same spot for more than 24 hours?
Um...
Is that something that's ever been brought up? Or say 48 hours?
Like...
No, it's in the code because it's addressed that, oh, you mean talking about these residential areas?
And the reason why I ask is that...
Yeah.
...we live by a train station nine out of 10 times. Here it is, Friday, people pull in front of the house, they park their car, they take their bags out, and they walk to the train, see them in three days, especially on holiday weekends.
She's absolutely right. I got a great opinion. We don't have a problem. The neighbors outside of the train station probably don't have it. She's right. And the key would be with something like that, we have to be, again, I must say it's preferential, part what you have to do for certain areas, because she's getting, and I understand, we've talked about the one car that's not there. If we don't get a no stop, it's going to be forever, no, it's always going to be a no stop. But if it's in April, or May, June, it's going to be there forever, you know?
Well, I'll run that past Rob Magrino, but the first thing is, is it legal to do that?
That's my question.
If it's legal to do that, then find out what other municipalities have written to make it legal, and then we can present that as an option, too. But I'll pass to Rob on that.
That area is not CB? No.
See, that would address the issue that we were talking about, because if it doesn't move, then what, 72 hours, doesn't matter where it is?
Right. You're right on the edge of the CB residential.
That would address the issue of how do you enforce it, if they're there that long?
It's a huge issue that I would encounter now in the Village of Suffolk overall, parking in general for whatever, from 15 minutes to long-term to development.
It's always...
But now it's, right now, Joe, I'm telling you, it's a lot of capacity, where the streams are full. It's an issue.
Well, I've mentioned this previous times before. B law is at capacity. It's at capacity. So then we have A lot, which is near capacity. D lot, which is like commercial parking, all the... So, you know, that's slowly, you can see it's slowly getting filled. And the rail lot for annual permits, I'm not kidding you, it's a 15-year waiting list. People have been on 15 years. And the F lot is now at capacity. And that's one of the things, I didn't bring it up tonight because I have to do additional research on it, is that, well, how do we handle the F lot? Because F lot is so at capacity, do we say you can park further down? Are we going to encompass a little bit more area for the...
Well, we used to fog around Goldfield, but that came to be, that came to be a problem when the flooding issue started. So if we could somehow implement utilizing this, there has to be another 20, 25 spots there, but that's a risk.
Is there any difference between the parking fee paid by Suffolk residents and the people who come from out of the village?
Yeah, 50%. Suffolk residents get a 50% discount. But the question then becomes, if you're, if this is the Village of Suffolk and you're paying Village of Suffolk taxes, then should you get preferential treatment for the parking lots? And the reason why people want to park in Suffolk is because they still can get on the train and sit down. So we are at a premium because people don't want to go farther north, they don't want to take the risk of going down south, so they will get a seat. So Suffolk has a prime parking location. Because of that, we're at, and the economy's doing well and so forth. We're at capacity.
Does it make any sense to raise the rate and give the village residents a 75% discount?
I mean, you could, that's a totally different thing. When we get into budgeting, we can talk about reschedules and so forth. I'm sure Michael will bring that up as part of the review for that. But I still don't know if, even if you charge an additional premium, if it's going to address the issue of how do you manage parking when you have X capacity, you have these many people that want to apply. Having additional parking was one of the reasons why we have looked at different properties, and unfortunately, that didn't move forward, so we have the same amount of parking, and we're trying to now negotiate additionally.
Do we charge different rates, for example, for the rail lot versus other lots?
The rail lot is charged at a different rate because we're the property managers for New Jersey Transit. So New Jersey Transit sets the rates.
I see.
However, New Jersey Transit, for some reason, hadn't changed their rate structure for probably 15 years. And it's quite interesting, because we have done some lobbying in terms of that with the MTA and so forth. And after doing our lobbying, we finally got New Jersey Transit to make, I think, a fairly good increase in their daily parking rate, so that it would be closer to what the Village of Suffolk charges, because what would you do? You're going to try to park at the cheaper parking spot. And that's why the rail lot fills up so much. But even though they made a significant, no one really even mentioned it after it was done, they're still not at parity with the Village of Suffolk daily parking rate for the mutual, our parking rate.
How daily rate is more than there?
So New Jersey Transit sets the rates, do they own the land of the parking lot?
They own the land.
So if there's a 15-year waiting list, I don't know how many people that entails, but it's 10 people, is it 200 people? I mean, is there...
It's 80 people.
80 people. So is there a point, and I'm not saying 80 is the point, but is there a point where we can essentially lobby New Jersey Transit and say, we have 80, or 200, or wherever a number is, that would be a good number, modify customers that are willing to pay a monthly rate, it might be worth expanding the lot, whether it's, you know, building or debt, or... modify customers that are willing to pay a monthly rate, it might be worth expanding the lot, whether it's, you know, building a deck or something.
Well, that, we've discussed that, and the issue is, at this particular point, the question becomes, is it more beneficial to the village of sufferin' for New Jersey Transit on that property, considering that we're not in New Jersey?
Right.
We're the only stop that's not owned by the state of New York, which is the reason why, um, the mayor, and myself, and, um, additional people from the MTA who were representative of this community, um, have been working and lobbying down in New York City for the MTA to take ownership, for whatever that means, um, you know, be it a dollar, and then there's no liability, or whatever, um, whatever the terms and conditions are. However, what it would mean is that when the MTA is distributing funding, um, for the upgrades of the different train station, sufferin' would be in the running, it's not in the running right now. And, um, the MTA has more dollars to spread around than does New Jersey Transit, so it's to our benefit, um, to continue the fight and to try to get, so if that's the case, would, and would New Jersey Transit be even, um, do you wanna continue that conversation with New Jersey Transit, if the goal really is to make it a New York train station? And have it really be a beautiful place for people to show up, have, have some stores, have some dry cleaning services, just like the other ones have?
But in any case, the village doesn't own that land.
No.
So whoever, whether it's New Jersey Transit that owns it, or whether it's the MTA that could own it in the future, whoever that would be, there is some point where it's financially beneficial for them to build more spots.
If I may, just to understand how the MTA and New Jersey Transit work, they look at their entire set of facilities for the entire route. They set their pricing according to how they believe they want commuters to go to those places. So, um, and I've dealt with this in other communities in Westchester, they have their own set mind on what their rate should be, and it could be significantly different than your local government because they are adjusting those rates according to what they believe is the proper rate to attract the commuters that they want at those stations.
Right. So they don't want too big of a crowd at one station, so they use the parking fees?
They do it just like you would do with bridges, you know, you set the rate to where you want people to go, the lower rates when they need to fill up areas, and the higher rate, and they try to, to make them somewhat, um, equal across the stations. They would, they don't have that much of variation, but they have enough, but they make them somewhat equal so that a rider from sufferin' wouldn't pay significantly more than a rider from Ramsey on the same train route for parking.
Right, and, um, separate in the side of parking, the other reason why we're lobbying, we're lobbying for, um, just basic rights for people to be able to get on the train in sufferin' with a handicap.
Accessibility.
So, you know, there's a lot of issues with the rail lot, um, as property managers and not owners, um, and being the, the stepchild of the New Jersey Transit system. Uh, you know, you can see that if you look historically, that building was built, um.
Maybe thirty-eight.
Yeah, you look at the, you're not even talking World War II era, okay, you're talking post-depression, pre-World War II era, and it looks like it, because when you go down there, you don't know if you're gonna go camp out in the place, or, or if you're gonna get on the train. When you go inside and the, and the bathrooms are beautiful, but at the outside of the place, you know, there's trip and fall hazards all over the place, which we've raised with them too. So it's, it's a lot, but we're at capacity, we don't have any more places for people to park, and I will be coming to the board if we can't manage this to determine, how are we gonna select? Village residents first, uh, but how are we gonna figure it out, because that's without the land?
Yeah.
That's it.
Alright. Fire.
So we're gonna, we're gonna be bringing up the resolutions for the truck, three of those will be done. And then we have, we're gonna have three new members for the host company, uh, Joseph Runwald over eighteen, George Bluewood over eighteen, and Hayden Kaplan, he's under eighteen. And then we'll, uh, we'll look at the parking around, me and Jeremy were just looking at it on his phone.
Right.
Basic rule of thumb, we just love with is if you, if you don't have parking on the side where the wires are, because then the truck are pulling closer, closer under the wire, and you get more reach out of the end of the ladder.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
If you, a general rule of thumb, if you, if you do not allow parking on the side with the wires, with the electric lines.
Right.
Because then the truck can shove over to that side, and you get more reach out of the ladder.
Right.
You'll get more, you get more angle to ease it up, to get under it to the side, to that side, and the other side, you can just reach over and get over the cars, so.
Does we have any overhead on the cross street?
Yeah, on the other side.
On the side where everybody's parking.
On the side where everybody's parking, we just looked at it on.
So that's where you don't want to park, where it's no parking?
Yes.
Yes.
Because it's easier, okay, that's, that's what it is.
For the houses, you can get the ladder truck closer under the wires, and you'll get more reach on the houses.
Right.
On the house side to the wires.
But not on the?
On the other side, on the other side, you can reach right over the cars.
Right, right, right.
Where the cars.
So is that because you should flip the park?
But the park, the park should be on the inside.
But there are spots there, like where the entrances are, it just still has to be no parking, where the fire department connections are.
Right.
Utility connections, we have to be careful how it, how they, how they set up there.
Right.
But you'd be able to get some cars over there that would really be out of the way.
Flip.
That's what we were just thinking about.
You could do it, you could do it, but now you suck it off, and you patch it.
Yeah, well, it has to be conformed to whatever standard that it needs to conform to, right, for the, what kind of connections, do they call those, the risers?
Yeah, the FTC sprinkler and, and stamp pipe riser connection.
Stamp pipe riser connection, then whatever the essence is off, the, for clearance.
It's probably just like a hire, you know, just so you can get in there.
Okay, keep that in mind. Alright, good. So we have the resolution here authorizing the purchase of the C-grade, um, Capital Customs Vanadium Steel Pumper, we have the bond reso, do we have any questions for the chief of the board, does the board have any questions?
In, in general, I, I think I've mentioned what the PD is doing, and I think it's probably a good idea, so that we don't keep having to bond money to buy fire trucks every few years to set up a fund that, that essentially saves money ahead of time, that is, that's earmarked, so that when it's necessary to buy one, the money's there, wait, so we have a prudent idea, rather than paying interest on bonds.
Is that something that's possible, Mike?
Yes, it can be done.
Is that standard practice with other places, is that what?
I wouldn't call it standard practice, but it's available, um, some places do it, some people, some places do a mix where they'll raise half the funds, and then the other half is bonded, so it's less of an impact. But of course, you know, what it means is, for instance, this is a eight-hundred-thousand-dollar fire truck, so you would, you would say they last, what, about twenty years?
Well, this one's twenty, this one's twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, but let's say, so let's say it's twenty-five years, so you take that eight-hundred thousand, divide by twenty-five, put that away this year, and next year, check the prices again, see if they're gonna go up, so you might have to adjust it, but then it's a capital reserve is what it is.
Jeremy and Ryan are working on a schedule.
They are, okay.
That's what I'm saying, so they're gonna be working on that, so you, you'll have a better idea which is coming up, Mike.
The other benefit, as I see it again, um, is that if you're putting money away ahead of time towards future purchase, you're earning interest on that money, as opposed to paying interest for borrowed money, so that's why I see it as.
Most fire trucks, most fire districts do it that way, because they have.
They have the taxes.
They have the taxes.
They have the resources, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, it's up to them, it's law. Any other questions for the chief? Thank you.
Alright, thank you, have a good night.
Good night. Culture and Recreation.
Good evening, everybody. So a few things coming up, February sixth is the International Dinner for Girl Scouts at the Community Center. For those of you that haven't been there before, they're all invited, the Girl Scouts are lots of paging, they represent every country, and a lot of good food. So February sixth, I have it at six p.m., but it doesn't start until six-thirty, so it just isn't new. Uh, February seventh, the next air dance, Chief Osborne, uh, I have an audition here, I sent it to them out there today. February fourteenth, at Connor, I know a lot of people work during the day, um, it's for individuals, so I didn't mean it as a board or week, but if anyone's available, but I know it's not a convenient time. But it's a cute day, Rockland Freedom is always a nice opportunity.
Yeah, Mike, I didn't answer you, but I'll be there.
How early do they start?
Uh, nine a.m., I believe, is the first morning.
I read the form.
Ten minutes.
Don't that treat them?
The treatment.
If you want, it is, it's kids all dressed up, and then it's just, just a fun, a fun day for them to go.
I scheduled on the day.
Okay.
And what would be the latest?
Uh, two-thirty, I believe.
And we'd be nine o'clock.
No, they, they do, they quit, they, they love, they love seeing everybody coming. Um, AARP is starting Tuesday for, uh, the public to come up to Lita Lyden, Elaine just put it on the sign today, so we're getting that out.
Residents only.
Last year, we had this discussion, because I thought we were, the overflow hasn't been that bad, so we're saying residents only.
Right.
And that's how we're gonna pose it, and we'll see how the crowds go.
Right.
But right now, it's residents only.
Okay.
Uh, February twentieth, we have a self-defense class with Melinda's Art Studio, uh, six-thirty to eight o'clock over at the Community Center.
In the morning.
Sorry?
That would be great, because then we could all go.
So we do six-thirty in the morning and six-thirty at night. Um, February twenty-first, we have our lead group, they unfortunately have bumped out from the last, um, meeting with the building, so they're really looking forward to coming out in February. Um, we're going to start movies in the afternoon again, movie at the center, I don't know if anyone's ever seen it, but The Peanut Butter Falcon, I've never seen it, Elaine has seen it, she said it's good, it's a very good movie. That will be on the twenty-seventh. Uh, Evening Yoga, Nancy's starting yoga in the evenings at the Community Center, it'll be March second, ninth, sixteenth, and the thirtieth at six-thirty. Uh, March third, we are going to have Narcan Training, at one of the meetings, uh, resident partners, they're going to do Narcan Training, so we're bringing the state in, and they're gonna do some training here in the auditorium, that's at six o'clock. Uh, March seventh is.
That's six p.
Six, six o'clock p.m. to seven thirty, yep.
Thirty.
Uh, March third.
Thirty.
Yep. Uh, March seventh is the STEAM Expo, Mayor, we did work that out, the fire department is giving us all the trucks.
Good.
So that would be a nice opportunity.
And they were, they were okay with the truck?
Yes, Jeremy and I were the same, they were.
I mean, did you speak to sour or to?
Yeah, oh, they're excited.
And they're fine, okay.
They're thrilled to have it.
They wanted like the silver truck or something, like, I don't know.
Yeah, the fire truck would be a big thrill.
Or the orange one.
That's what they wanted, I'm like, I think they want that, I mean, it stinks.
So that will be March seventh, up at the high school, it's all day, an event, they've really made a big, um, a big change up there, it's gonna be a nice, uh, afternoon. April fourth is Southern Litley, they're doing opening day, for those of you that see your scheduling, April fourth is also the ECON, where we did that last year. Nine o'clock is the opening ceremony in Litley, then eleven o'clock is the ECON, so it'll just be a busy, busy morning for the village. Um, that's it for the events, I believe, and then the discussion for Broadway Strip. As you know, we do two trips a year, and the first one we're looking to do is going to Frozen on March fourteenth, so we are requesting payment for the tickets and the bus, and we can sell the tickets for ninety-five dollars a person. So as soon as I get approval for that, then we can go in and purchase them and start putting the word out.
Does the ninety-five dollars cover all expenses for that?
Then ninety-five dollars includes the bus, so if we leave here, it's up in Little Town Hall, and includes a ticket, and then they get into the city, and they can do whatever they want for their lunch, so it's a ticket, it's transportation back and forth, and a ticket to the show.
And no cost to them?
No, it's eighty-seven dollars for the end, but that includes a ticket, me, and myself to be there as well, so eighty-seven dollars is the overflow, but it's, it's a phenomenal price. And people, they'll enjoy it, we've got Frozen's are hot, they're right now, so I'll do a nice show for the fourteenth, so if I can get approval for that, we, we need to secure the tickets, so.
So you're gonna see that on Monday?
Yes, we can wait till Monday if you wish, you want to do it tonight, whichever.
No, I was waiting till Monday, so we have the resolution and, and, and.
Got your slogan, Frozen and Hot?
I will say that one. So that's, that's what I hope for, um, the, the other show. Clifford Theater, Mayor, you and I, we had a chance to talk, um, I'd like to.
Oh, yeah, I'm talking about that.
No, that's, that's okay, I'd like to try to go forward, we'll talk about the show, um, the whole idea of getting kids to be able to be part of our show is getting the word out to them so they don't come into different things over the summer, so when you and I get a chance, I'd like to.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Get some recognition. So even on Monday, if we get a chance to talk before, I'd like to not, I'd like the board to know what the show will be, but then Anthony, the director, usually likes to make a big production to have kids and show up to them, so.
Unveiling.
Unveiling, so that's all, that's my next thing, that's it.
And you wanna do that also, you wanna have that prepared by Monday?
Yes.
Okay, so let's meet, uh.
Yeah, I have one to talk to you.
Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, just.
Perfect.
Is that just the show, or would it be the rules that go with the show?
Nothing, well, no, all it is is getting the rights to a show.
Getting the rights.
Then once we get the rights, then we can put it out there, and maybe do the.
And I know we're gonna have further discussion on that, on who is gonna participate.
Yes, yes.
Productions.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Perfect, and that is it, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Chief Fire.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Wood. Um, just very simply, a quick update, just to explain a couple things going on. Uh, it's been a pretty mussy, pretty, pretty busy month for us, in the month of January. January is one of those months, you have the atmosphere, everybody's around, and all is quiet because of weather, and forces also were very busy. We had over seven hundred calls from police bloggers as of today, it's obviously still going, a couple of days in a month. We had some drug arrest, we had some drug arrests, four to domestic violence arrests, we had two overdose deaths, hey, hey, two overdose deaths within a matter of twelve hours, and we had some overdose saves, ladies, for the ones, Sunday morning about five a.m. I was saying overdose, uh, but Cameron is an overdose death, we're responsible, officer's going back, we're doing it in two minutes, spots come up on Milford Way.
Not there.
Okay, two shot, Jim, I'm going back in, crazy cleaners after the Narcan pressing down, walking out the ambulance, so they actually worked it out well, but the management, obviously, so. What we did, we had a busy month, uh, call wise, and just, just incidentally, I, I, I know you guys, you know, are all aware of the missing person investigation was starting, uh, in December, December twenty, there was a person that was missing here in the village, eighteen-year-old, wasn't that's. Pretty enough, and that was reported to December twenty-second. We first took the information, processed, put missing person alerts, everything out, as it started the arresting, the eighteen-year-old did not come home, we obviously stepped the investigation up, went on, put a call center, pushed out a warrant, did some searches, did all sorts of investigative technique, um, using, I should say, using multihaltitude investigative techniques, we were trying to locate him. This kept going on, going on, I got so involved that we enlisted the, uh, British State Police, New York State Police, and that is going out of Monroe, they sent out a team of ten investigators from the area, some of them from upstate, came down, they were scientists. We basically, after a full investigation of video and everything else, we, we pinpointed the location, today, we were waiting in Washington, we started focusing everywhere, based on our investigation what we found. We had aerial helicopters flying low, state police, we had divers, mayor, we had, we had divers, we had all day, divers, we had canine, we had dog, out there, just a, they sent, upwardly nothing came up. We then got in the, uh, community search rescue, which is called Conestra, it's a group, tournament is out of, um, I think it's, uh, I'm blanking on his name, he's out of, uh, absolute gentleman, and he, who's the chairman, he runs this organization. And he brings in all such rescue teams, some more up for media investigation, they did it out south, up, up in New York State, and we went out on Monday with the King Day, checked the way everybody, by American Legion, to know about it. We were running out of resources, we had multiple, we followed up, upstate police, the county department was still gonna give a last ditch effort, recalled everything we had, eighty-four people, eighty-four volunteers, I should say. On Sunday, uh, searched the Wayne Avenue area again, and within a half hour, one of the teams, it was some Catskill Mountain, there was a Catskill Mountain search and rescue team, uh, located the body here, what, underneath, it was literally right underneath the Toward Bridge, on Wayne Avenue, the water. We had divers, ended up, we was through there, old water, also, you shouldn't have to talk to the state police investigator, you had it, you know, we talked that day. We were in the search, it was possible, through the heavy rain on Saturday, things got moved around a little bit, body was carried down a little bit into the waterway from the lake, and at that point, it was just very, very little visibility, I know Mary could stop, saw was very little visibility, you saw basically the top of her head, and possibly, it looked like, it looked like a rock, was in our, in his body. it looked like a rock, it was on her, and his body fell down, sent the people to water, we got the body out, and obviously was taken to medical services office for a further investigation. I'm not saying we don't suspect our plate, and I'm gonna, yeah, we're ruling it out, but I'm gonna say we don't suspect it, from everything we have up to this point, from December twenty, but we are fully investigating it, obviously, to, to, you know, to make sure we, we don't make, basically, any, so, I'm trying to make sure we have it. So definitely very intense month. We were under these assumptions, there was one or two things at the after, Sunday, you know, summation of the whole incident was, our, our theory on the whole, the whole process, we used like an algorithm, what could, what could happen, was either right at that spot, and she was close, I mean, the water, or she was taken, unfortunately, we did locate her, which gave the policy for you, listening, lives here and suffer with that.
Was there, like, I'm just curious, was there a vehicle, like, that, did he have a vehicle, was there a vehicle near that area?
He was on foot. He was on foot. We had, we had few clues, weren't sure how valuable they were, it turned out pretty valuable, and we actually put some information out to the residents, I only have, Lexington, you told me the Knowles, Boston camp, there, because the, 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 the troops and officers were all door-to-door, you take anybody who saw a camera or anything, they'll know it now, just to see, that's how we developed some of our information. Like, that's obviously very time, labor intensive, I should say. So it took a while, but end result is we, we finalized those estimations, which is good, which was, my family said that it was excellent. And I do appreciate this part, I know you, I was getting informed and stuff, I'm like, through, just, every time Red Marsh, I saw it, and handled it, did a phenomenal job, you really did, and the state police are invaluable. I contacted the commander, I know, I'm familiar with, she's a captain of the city, she runs the region, and I just expressed my appreciation, just the resources they gave us to assist us, we're invaluable, really, just because of that people.
Maybe you could get me that information of the captain or the lead for state police, that we can draft a letter from the village itself?
I, I absolutely will, and if you're okay with that, I mean, obviously, it's toward me, it's a little bit, crest of time, or maybe the next quarter, I'd like to bring Jay from Constance, we had eighty-four people, we found him in half hour, and without them, just because of location, they know what to look for, they searched the mountains, we had teams from the other on decks, we had teams from, Canadian, Mohawk Mountain, all that here, used to look for, for bodies and rural areas and, you know, commissaries, so if you're okay with that, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to bring maybe just appreciation. I'll be, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be.
Yeah, perfect.
So any other questions, ask them before I go, but it is, because I, I feel a lot out here, I feel a lot so. And then, the one thing I was gonna bring up, if I could just discuss with you guys and this, I, I know you guys are new, so you're just, hearing about criminal justice reform, my voice is old today, I don't like it, did a lot of talking today, it's a shock, but it's really been shocking, a lot going on today. And the, the early justice reform, it's obviously something on face, man, every day. We've had several arrests this month, and due to the fact that we can do reforms, within basically twenty, forty, forty hours, I have to have all my arrest evidence, charges, witness information, evidence information, video from the car, video from the station, if I met a person, which happened under arrest, and in the morning, walked in through the back door for one minute, I have to give all the video from the back door from eight AM to the time of the person, which could be twelve hours. So it's very, once again, labor, it's very labor intensive to do that. So what we're looking to do is, obviously, I have a part-time record clerk for this, every local department, I think probably most of the state, as well from statewide, is making additions. I'm not looking at people, their department's adding full-time people for this. I think the information and the arrests that I have right now, because I'm gonna do it, all ten of you doing it, everyone's doing it. We're doing everything, we're gonna make it work right now, our record clerk, she's obviously, she's all around anyway. We're looking to have somebody to run that's gonna be able to do this for us, a few days a week, part-time record clerk, I have the money to budget, it's pumped to my, today, trying to make something else a minute, how are we gonna get the money, how do we have the money? So it was a self, I need help, to tell you guys, the mayor's, I'm not gonna cover some underneath, this is needed, because the problem is that, it's not just a matter of, oh, get it, restore it, get it, okay, there are cases getting dismissed by not getting information any time, particularly, a couple arrests, we had some felony arrests, we had burglary arrests, burglary, a, a, two people we got, and the amount of paperwork we had to get over every day, it was even seven, you know, it was just two people, and then on top of the other arrests we had. So that's moving forward, just to, for approval to establish that position, part-time record clerk.
The position is established already, it's, it's, it's unencumbered at this time?
Apologies, it's been there, it's been up here for years, about the hour.
So just looking to dominate, um...
A point, I look.
A point, someone.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for at this point, yeah. And, and I think it's even better, I think even more, I'm becoming to mention, that the money will come from, I have part-time officer resigned for personal reasons on Saturday, so that money is, is there, I was actually at another position, but I have the money available for his budget, and I would like to, you know, my budget, I'm glad, obviously, talk to you guys, and the, the mayor, and might come out, I have that position, it's a part-time, it's just a part-time record position, twenty hours a week. It will help us immensely.
And it's with the flexible hours, is it a...
So, I'm telling you, any flexible hours, because I tell you, the key is, like, just saying, we had, we had some arrests, we had some pretty good arrests, we had arrests up Perry Avenue, got hit in cars, took some drugs in the car, a lot of things, so those are the things I need there before you get that information over there quickly, because they're serious, they're serious cases. That's what I'm asking for, to...
I'm finished.
I'm making up what I can say, any, please, any question you have, I'm looking, obviously, for the money, it's fun to explain what I was looking for, to you guys today.
Appoint the right term, or we just, we just hiring somebody? Hire.
You could use the terminology of appointing for the resolutions, you're appointing them to the position.
Okay. Is, how does the rate, I think I saw the rate on one of the other pieces of paper, but how does the rate compare to the officer of design?
Um, it's pretty slow, it's lower than the public. What was the rate on the, how much was it, I know it was...
Eighteen.
Because eighteen, your rate, officer's twenty, twenty-five, I think, yeah. Oh, no, it's significantly less, yeah. And Steve, it's very still, we feel that, part-time, because right now, what's gonna happen is until we had it, we'd have a record clerk, we'd have an officer, there were, you know, I have to, I have to, and that's, that's what I was saying, it's definitely more cost-effective to do with the show.
No, I'm just asking...
Oh, no, that's what I was saying.
Having said that, so a part-time officer, let's say, was at twenty-five an hour for, I don't know how many hours per week, is the, is the part-time record, uh, clerk, uh, clerk part-time here, would they be a similar number of hours at the officer? So, okay, so it's actually, in effect, it's a same...
Same amount, same amount, no.
Okay, anytime this says...
Steve, I totally agree, and Steve, what, it's the same hours under local county personnel, we have to, we can't work, we're basically thirty-nine hours, forty, forty hours every two weeks, and every kid there, a part-time officer as well.
Less than half the full time.
That, that is a restriction we have to divide by, by county, which we don't, we follow, not a good way.
Okay.
Does any other questions you guys have, please, I'm, I'm here, it's, you know, the question, the call, whatever you need to go, I just wanted to go, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Appreciate it. Go ahead.
Mr. Wiki.
Oh, you wanna have, uh... Well, Reid, I just wanted to, yes, I, I appreciate the fact that Lord Warren is here to explain, or give us an update and explain what are the next steps would be for proceeding with the New York Rising projects. Um, just quickly, I just wanted to give an update before Lori steps up to do that. There was an inquiry about the Chestnut Street Railroad underpass, and met a few weeks back, there was Clark Osborne and Joe Hunt. We, you know, we assessed the situation, and we've identified an area where the, that sense would be the plateau of both sides of that underpass, where if we, in fact, wanted to have an effective barrier, we would need to span that from plateau to plateau, this is like five hundred meter feet. And we looked at possible, what possible options, one, the most inexpensive option was to do something with a chain link type fence, which presents its own issues with snow removal and that type of thing. There is also challenges of mounting with the base plate into the concrete, there's conduit running in that, in those areas. So, and I think, I don't know if I mentioned, but it looked like the, the low budget number to do anything, it was like a forty-five thousand dollars, so it was not an inexpensive approach, so, if you, who wants to pursue that further based on, you know, what we have established?
What do you guys have a recommendation?
Well, it's, yeah, we, we're really scratching our head, yeah, Clark, obviously, you can chime in on that, but there, because of, like, as those challenges I mentioned about the underground conduit, the snow removal, anchoring into the existing concrete or curb, you have to, we may even have to, one door was that we'd have to take sections of the curb out, get down further into the, you know, below, below the pavement surface.
To what, what?
Yeah, no, we had to support it properly, so...
To what, an arger?
Well, we were, you know, we even the fence, even the fence, because of the fact that being that close to the edge of the road, once we do in the winter season, when we're doing our snow removal, we're pushing snow, we're gonna be pushing snow up against that fence, so we have to have it very, very sturdy, and even at that, we probably would have long-term maintenance issues.
What about that, like, I call it split rail fence, it's just, you see it in the parks all the time, just a metal and two, two split rails, span the whole length.
Snow would go right through.
And snow would go through.
Excuse me, the exact, making sure we can get through, we're saying that.
Right.
Make it closer, I'm saying that, so obviously...
The one thing that we did talk about is the height.
Right.
It's not high enough.
It has to be like three, four feet high.
It's only like two rails, so one, the top's not high enough, and then you don't have any big crawling on there.
Well, if you go four foot, you probably need at least three rails, if you, you know, go three feet, you have people hopping.
Yeah, like a hawk, it's like about three feet high.
Yeah, it goes like that, higher than that, probably four feet, but in any event, it's, it's not gonna be an inexpensive proposition, so if you wanted us to continue to pursue that, it sort of will.
Well, I think right now, when we started to look at that section of Chestnut and that whole area, if we analyze the parking at the same time, get the parking restriction on the book, post it, seek compliance and enforcement at the same time, and maybe we should take that step initially and see how that goes, and if that doesn't work, or prevent people from parking or crossing, or whatever it may be, then go to step two and put in some type of device to divert the, the fence, to divert people.
It's just a hard tier fence.
And it's got, I, I agree, that would, you know, if we, we could see if that will deter the standing underneath, but, yeah, you still got all the pedestrian traffic and going to, you know, Sheldon, you know, proliferating that.
And at the same time, you know, we're gonna be talking about the possibility of bringing on another parking enforcement aid, that I know in the past that we did utilize in during rush hour to control that flow of traffic down there also. That, I mean, initially, try those steps maybe, but, or continue to pursue a different type of fencing, the chain link fence, for me, doesn't...
Yeah.
I believe that's the least expensive approach.
Not, not, for the least expensive, yeah, so...
Yeah, I'll certainly continue to take a look and see if there's...
Yeah, I'm more concerned about the secondary part of it.
Right, but that's why we have to go.
So like you said, I think the other, the other thing, just with parking, like, helping that parking aid, I'm sorry, the, the parking authority person, but still got, you know, throw heavy drugs at people.
What about pavement markings, and, you know, trying to look at the crosswalks? I know that there's certain requirements...
Well, one of the things that actually Clark identified was that, as you're, you know, sight distance coming up from the underpass, you know, you have to be able to get to that plateau.
But even on the other side, towards the lot, towards the F lot side, because people cross, right, of course, they go down into the F lot.
That's right.
On, on, on the roundhouse side.
Yeah, we can do a crosswalk.
You know, I mean, that might be helpful, additional signage may be helpful, enforcement and, and maybe helpful to one of the parking, uh, department, parking area.
I mean, I see, you have to change hours.
Right.
So that's a new job to us, you have to stretch it, it's in the morning, when they need to commute lots, you have to do a person, we've booked, we, we have done that in the past, we have.
Have a special attention by the radio car.
Absolutely.
When, when we can.
Absolutely. Yeah, the signs, like, like, when you're, if you're on the edge approaching that crosswalk, I guess, we have those signs that do a pretty good job to alert you, and, you know, if we had, you know, you know, set, if we did put a crosswalk in on each side, and we had signs, like you said, as you go under, until you, until the plateau, I think, those signs would help.
And all of that signage there, that's the hit load was new also.
Yeah.
That's the highest we reflected, and we, and we worked and lobbied with Alan Jacky for all of that, too. So that would be helpful.
Yeah.
You have to tell the people what to do, realistically, you know?
It's true, it's true.
And guide them into the right...
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Lori?
We've got the floor.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you for having me tonight. I really am not sure who's been on board for a while, and if you all know what the projects and the program is, so I don't know if you need a little project history, or you'd like me to start?
I would give them a project history timeline, I know Joe's on the board previously, Paul and Steve have been here for over a year, and Charles is new, so with the, with a little summary of the background.
Okay, well, subsequent to Hurricanes Irene and Lee and Superstorm Sandy, New York State was awarded a significant amount of money from the Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funding. Some of that funding was funneled into the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery, and particularly the New York Rising Community Reconstruction Program. That is the program that this community is working with. Under that program, based on the damages that the village sustained, it was determined that you, as a community, were eligible for up to three million dollars to implement projects. To, to uncover what those projects were, we had a planning process, and we had input from local residents as to where and how the community was impacted. When that planning process was over, we looked to partner with somebody who could help us implement, and for a variety of reasons, at the time we were doing that, it was determined that in the best interests of the, the program and the community, that perhaps DASNY should be the subrecipient of those funds for the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery, working with the village as a project beneficiary. Under the program, we have developed three individual projects that were originally under two applications. One was a generator project that would put backup power here at Village Hall, as well as the Department of Public Works building. The other was a water wastewater project, where we were looking to make some improvements to the digester building, as well as wells number two and four. We were working through DASNY with their procured engineer, Dewberry, and as we moved this along in the design process, it became evident, based on the preliminary cost estimates, that we were not going to have enough funding to do everything, although I will say we do have designs for everything. And we also have determined that we would be able to do more if we switched from DASNY as the subrecipient to the village, because DASNY's fees were quite high. So at this juncture, we are in the process of terminating the relationship that goes or has with DASNY, and DASNY has with their engineer, Dewberry. We have received all the plans and specifications for all three of those project components, unstamped plans and specifications. What has to happen now is we need to enter into a subrecipient agreement directly with the village, and that, that would allow us to funnel the money through the village. The village, in turn, has to enter into an agreement with Dewberry, Dewberry to, to revise the plans and specifications just a little bit, because with DASNY, you don't have to follow Wex's law, but if it's a village project, you have to follow Wex's law. So there'll be some modifications to the design, Dewberry would provide some bidding assistance and some other services, and you would also need a construction manager. Now, the last time I was here, I brought with us our technical advisor, and we presented two ways that the village could move forward to do this. One would be to just go ahead and enter into a contract with Dewberry for the type of services that they would have provided under DASNY, but now directly to the village, and then amend that contract to include all of the construction admin and inspection and other services. The other way of doing it is to just enter into that contract with Dewberry for what they would have done under DASNY's contract, and go out and do a request for proposals and hire a second independent construction manager.
That Dewberry can also bid on.
That Dewberry can also bid on, that is absolutely correct. So where we are now is we are waiting on the final invoices to come in through DASNY for both Dewberry's services, and, and then, of course, any kind of contract amendment that would leave the balance of the money back into the project funding, so that that would pay for Dewberry under their contract with the village, and we're waiting for DASNY's final labor invoices. Now, one of the best benefits of having gone with DASNY is that Gozer, as an organization, said, we've got communities that are gonna work with DASNY, we're going to pay up to 10% of DASNY's fees. So the community allotment was $3 million, DASNY was allowed up to $300,000 of non-alotment funding, so that $3 million is actually being spent in the village. DASNY's fees would have been significantly over that 10%, and it would have cut into even further the number of projects that the village could have, could achieve. So that being said, when they're finished and paid off, there will be some of that project delivery money available for the village. So if you have a clerk or, or, or somebody in payroll that works on our projects, you can bill against that. So there's a little bit of a reserve there. If you have to advertise for things, or you've got staff members at DPW that have to be involved and work on a project, you can bill some of their staff members against that 10% remaining. And my estimate right now is probably somewhere between, I wanna say, $80,000 and $100,000.
Out of the 300.
Out of the 300. Out of the $3 million, we, we have to finish paying Dewberry, so I don't have the final numbers there, but in the application for the generators, what I can tell you is that we have more than enough money in the application for that project. The cost estimate put it somewhere in the, just under $500,000 range. For the wellhouses, and just the wellhouses, probably closer to 1.8 or 1.9. I have to see the final estimate now that we've gotten that those plans and specs in. We're going to bid these projects at the same time. We're going to bid the wellhouses together as a package, because the way they were designed, one has to be done, and, and the other has to, to follow immediately. So those are linked. We're going to bid the generators with, as alternates. So if bids come in high, you might be able to get both generators done, you might only be able to get one generator done. But right now, based on cost estimates, I'm hopeful that we will be able to do both generators and both wellhouses. So the next steps that we're going to engage in is get those final invoices, and I'm hoping that I will see those early February. I will prepare a subrecipient agreement, and that, the board will have to pass a resolution allowing the community, the mayor, to sign this agreement. That agreement outlines all the terms and conditions and all the reporting requirements that go along with this, this grant. And then we'll execute that subrecipient agreement, it'll add all of the money to the agreement, and then we can go out to bid. I believe that the community has decided that the, the best time to do the well project is after the summer season, because summer's peak water usage, and we don't wanna have to take a well offline during that time. So we probably can go out to bid in the spring, start construction in the fall. And, and at the same time, because we're bidding together, we'll know if we have enough money for all of the generators and the wellhouses. As soon as we, we, we have that answer and we bid the generators, we can implement construction of those right away. Every project will have a minimum of a 10% contingency built into the budget.
Good question, this might be for Charles. The generator for a village wall, is that the power of all the village wall, or just a portion of it?
Of the entire.
The entire village wall.
So then we would, that one would be removed, I was thinking, I was serious, it'd be removed and replaced with a new generator that would do the entire building.
Any other question I have is, being that we're going to be looking at two wells, one of them would have to be offline as it's being worked on? Is that gonna create an issue, given?
No, one's not gonna be offline.
No?
Right, Charles?
Yeah, we, actually Dewberry, one of our last design meetings, had a, a scheme in which we would be able to continue functioning. We would have to obviously get back into that in greater detail.
Because at, at the last point, the way they explained their design is that they had to do them in tandem, in order for it to work correctly with the design, and I was still under the impression that meant one could be offline for a while, but that.
Well, see, I mean, the reason to do it during the fall season, we wouldn't want to do it in the summer season where we have high peak, high peak demand. If we off-peak, we can run one pump, one well. So we would have an opportunity to have more flexibility.
Is that one thing?
Well, we also have the new variable speed on the new well also, Charles, right?
Right, right, right.
A higher flow rate that will be able to mix and blend.
All right.
Yeah.
So I will be sending, and I don't know whether you got copies, Charles, of the 100% plans and specs, the unstamped versions?
No, it's been quite a while since.
I just received those on late Friday afternoon, so I will send those to you, so that you have them for the generators and you have them for the wellhouses, and you will also have them, although they will be unstamped, for the improvements that were supposed to take place at the digester building. We paid for design, we just don't have enough money to implement that.
For the MCC. Can you just discuss a little bit to the board about the, if there is a benefit with staying with Dewberry as opposed to going out to RFP?
Well, you're going to have to stay with Dewberry to a certain degree, because you need them to modify the plans and specifications to be tailored to reference the village rather than DASNY, and also to address Wicks law, so that those plans and specifications can be bid to each of those trades. So Dewberry will provide services. Now, I know the last time I was here, I believe we brought along with us a template, which is kind of a sample of what the request for proposal would look like, and it outlined both what Dewberry would do, and, and what they would do under a contractual view, is essentially the same thing they would have done had we stayed with DASNY, they would have been doing it for DASNY. And so we give us that.
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
I have, you talking about the RFP?
Yes.
I have a few copies. I have one, I'm sure.
Let's just send them to the show. I have Danielle disseminated to the board, sure, please.
Okay, and so this, this document is kind of the template that outlines if you wanted to stick with Dewberry, and you do need to enter into the contract with them, and then go out for a construction manager inspector, this outlines who would be doing what. And I think it's pretty, pretty clear in here who would be doing it why. And as I said, you do have the option, and I will say it is up to your legal counsel to determine if they're comfortable with this, because it's really your procurement, your procurement. If they're comfortable with entering into a contract with Dewberry, and then amending their contract to include all the services, and they feel that that satisfies the letter of the law, Gozer has no problem with you doing that. And the only thing that I would say about that particular course is it might be faster in the long run to just amend a contract instead of initiate a whole new contract. So I would imagine that we're gonna be reaching out to Dewberry shortly, and initiating those contract conversations, so that we can get them under contract with the village, kind of on the same timeline as getting the village under contract with those. And I'd like to see that all in place, if possible, by the end of February, but I'm thinking more realistically, probably the second weekend.
Yeah, I'm thinking, oh, realistically.
Yes.
And the time has been.
Right, but we are, we are at the very end of our involvement with DASNY, and I think that the village will gladly support me in this. One of the reasons besides the funding is that DASNY is, has not been as responsive, and has not really managed their, their engineer at this point. So when the village enters into a contract, we can really manage Dewberry and much more aggressively. Is there any other questions?
Right, just one quick one.
Sure.
Those administrative costs, could they be spent on, let's say, hiring somebody to manage the paperwork for the filing of reporting requirements and all that sort of thing for this grant?
I would like to check with my grant manager on that, I do believe that is the case. I believe that the village of Ellenville actually brought somebody online to, to take care of, of this, but I, I don't, I don't know whether that has to, if, if you're hiring somebody as a permanent position, or you're just hiring somebody temporarily.
Temporary.
Okay, I just wanted, I would wanna confirm with the grant manager, gentleman by the name of Bill Blankenship that I work with, he'll be able to, to kind of clarify what HUD allows and doesn't allow in terms of temporary hires. But you will have, you will have reporting requirements, quarterly progress reports, very simple form. You will have to use an online invoicing system, known as Elation, it is a cloud-based system, so there's no software that needs to be purchased, but all of the invoicing, all of the MWPE requirements that are throughout New York State, and Section 3 requirements, which are HUD, have to be reported through this system, and we have technical assistants to train whoever in the village is going to be working on it, whether it's somebody already on staff or somebody that is brought on board. We are here to kind of hold your hand until you feel comfortable and can, and run with the process.
Okay, great.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, Laurie, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Charles. I'll send out those electronic copies of those documents.
Great, nice. Next item is Delaware Engineering has prepared a proposal for the upgrade of a waste water treatment plant, and we're fortunate to have Rob Flores here, and. Yeah, and give details and answer any questions.
Right. Yeah, we've been working with the mayor, Charles, and JCO on this for over a year, and so, you know, a lot of things that are old news to me, right, you, so just feel free to stop and ask questions if you'd love to, right? Is this kind of the big cheat sheet, and then it shows an aerial view of the treatment plant? And it highlights the upgrades that are needed in the wastewater plant? So just super quick summary, we've been under consent orders to upgrade the plant for a while. So we were hired last year, we came in to find out a way to do it. We worked a lot with, like, everybody here at the village hall, the mayor, Amy, Charles, JCO, what we're saying. And JCO, you know, you know, went that whole on yards to get the plant running as best it could, and it was there, but you do have 40-year-old equipment, so even when, when you got it all running, it still breaks down quite often. And they have trouble meeting permits, which is why you're in the order to fix the plant. So we came up with alternatives, a bunch of alternatives, as to how to cost effectively operate the plant, and we flushed them out with the operators, what was feasible, what could be done, some of the things that really drive it, is it the more you reuse, the more tanks you reuse, the less buildings you build, the capital costs goes way down. When we walked in, the village was looking at like a 15 to 20 million dollar project, which was, you know, not gonna happen, so by reusing a lot of existing structures.
Really, why don't we step back, just make the board aware that when we did come in to, to reevaluate what the final design engineering was previous, that we determined and during the presentation to the DEC, that that actual design was not going to work, which was determined by.
Right away, also. So DEC rejected, the design was submitted.
It was rejected.
Right. Because, and then, you know, Charles and, you know, got on the phone, called us and several other engineering companies to, you know, it's like, is this, is this really happening? Kind of thing? And we went through all the processes, talked to a lot of engineers, selected us. What was proposed was not gonna work, and not only was it gonna be real expensive, it's just, it's not gonna work, and it wasn't gonna meet your permits. It was, it wasn't like a different way to skin the cat, it was just, it was just bad. It was so bad, even though you had an order that said, submit a set of plans by this date and go to bid, the DEC said, I agree with you, we need to start over. Right? So we prepared an engineering report, and this is an excerpt from that, which validated alternatives that would work. And this was the, the cost for this was $99,000, right? And, you know, it would be upgraded, improve performance, you would be able to meet your discharge limits, and, you know, it's a, it's a 30-year, 40-year solution as opposed to abandoned. So I don't, it's enough of a history on that, we wanna get into the more, so, anyway, so what happened last year is, okay, we developed a plan, it's acceptable to the state, this thing gives.
The old plan was submitted to the state's DEC, and it was rejected.
Right.
So then you were brought on board to come up with a new plan.
Right.
Was that new plan submitted to the DEC and accepted as this is gonna work?
Right, so what happened in 2019 is that new plan was memorialized in an engineering report, which was submitted to DEC. DEC, we said, this is the plan, this is the new plan, and this is how we, we should, we recommend you update the consent order that the village has, based on this new plan. We went with the mayor, Amy, Charles, we all met with DEC, the meetings, we discussed it. They agreed that this would work. They modified the order, which gave you the new deadlines. We used this report to submit for a grant. Based on this report, you got a grant.
Easy grant.
So this is, this is where we, this is where we ended the year, right? So now the order says, okay, we got a new plan, now prepare those plans and the plans and specs, so that, you know, we can move on. So that's the next step, was authorization to move on to design, so he's, gets him out the new plans and specs, the detailed design, to the state by, by December. So what the upgrade includes.
And it reflects the different trajectory, two things, one is the grant was substantial, I think it was 2.2 million? And the second thing is submitting the plans and specs engineering report to the DEC onto our EFC is going to allow them to open it up for us to start getting our financing reimbursement, or financing through the EFC. So for this project.
At the low interest rate financing.
Right, isn't that what we went over at last meeting?
Yeah.
All those numbers? Okay.
So obviously Michael and Fred are heavily involved in this too, a lot, a lot of people are involved in this, so we're all, all, all go in the same direction here. So, anyways, this, this is trying to be big, so it gets a little fuzzy, but if I could point your attention, it's just a struck new headworks. It's kind of a faint purple building, you see that? So the headworks of your existing wastewater plant are, you know, vintage 1930, you know, it's a bar rack, first one I took a scrape bid, and the modern standard, so when I say modern, I mean, you know, clean water rack 1972, is that anything over 100,000 gallons per day should have a mechanical box screen. You're, you're at 1.8 million gallons per day, and you have a manual box. So guess what, sometimes the man doesn't get there in time to clean the bar rack, right? And you have problems. Plus, because it's a manual bar rack, it has to have a big space, and a lot of things get pie, right? So all that rags and sticks and stones that get by it, they clog the pumps and everything else that's downstream, so that's why you're supposed to have mechanical bar screens. So you have the mechanical bar screen, you have, you're supposed to remove grit, okay? Just to go back to a wastewater plant, works by removing big stuff first, you know, bigger grit or smaller, smaller, as it moves through. So that's where we made sticks and stones and rags, the next thing to remove is grit. So right now, you have. So, right now, you have a sort of operable grit removal system. Basically, it's a channel, collects the grit. You have no way to remove the grit once it settles, which means when it fills, and then when the next strain event happens, it just flushes and goes down to the next tank. All this, you know, this is vintage from the plant. Remember, we had a major upgrade in the 1980s, right? So this was the building before that. So, the headworks building, put the mechanical bar screen, put a new grit system, and then we put it inside the building. Right now, they're outside. And I always tell people, if you're going to have, you know, a piece of equipment that costs $200,000, you want it outside. So, that gets to the new headworks.
Do you have to say that a lot?
People say, "Let's save $50,000 and not put a building over it." It's like, no. Anyway. And so, it gets to the new headworks. So, the flow back to the headworks goes to a primary clarifier. And because the plant...
Should I have it?
It's over here, right here. Because the primary clarifier, because the plant was retrofitted years, the flow doesn't go nice and linear, it jumps around a lot. It's just kind of unfortunate circumstances you have. But, so again, we removed the grit, so now we got to remove sludge that will settle. And that's what the primary clarifiers are doing. So, what's happening there is these tanks, again, they're approaching, they're 90 years old. You know, they're getting to be 100-year-old tanks, right? So, they need some, they need some concrete that's submerged underwater unless it holds up regwell. But the part that's not water, the ones exposed to the iron sulfide, you know, that's the one that needs to be looked at and fixed. There's handrails and there's concrete sidewalks, there's valves. And then the other part of that is, the Bobo talked about the flutter silencing. So, the standard today for wastewater plants is you have to maintain treatment three feet above 100-year flood. So, 3 feet above 100-year flood is higher than the top of the wall of these tanks. So we have to add a few feet to the top of a wall of the tank. So the water can flow through the tank and be treated and not be part of the flood. So after it goes to these tanks, it goes to this building, which is where the pumps are, the pumps to these trickle filters. These are the round ones, brown round ones down here. So, these trickle filters, some of the people who've lived here long enough to remember where they were covered, so you can actually see that, it looks like a giant sprinkler head. Moves really slowly across rocks, allows media as opposed to rocks. So, that technology, it exists, it's there, and this is one of the cost savers. This removes more than half of your wastewater load of the plant. So you have it, you know, use it to be a cost saver. And if you didn't use these, then the rest of the plant, which is what's up here, has to be twice the size. And then you're building new tanks, which drives the cost way down. So for the cost of variance and arms and a few pumps and valves, you have to build, you know, $10,000 for the tanks. So the water flows through those and comes to a pump station that's in this building. And that pump station's in pretty good shape, that, you know, facilitates from the tank with years. And the pumps are the right size, that kind of thing. We looked at your flows, it's part of the engineering report. And the capacity, like overall treatment capacity of the plant does not have to be increased, because your capacity right now is 1.8 million gallons per day, so you're averaging 1.2. And that'll be for growth. And something very drastic would have to happen if you don't use all that growth.
Can I ask you a question? I don't know if you would know. A building like the Sheldon, are you familiar with that building?
The one you built that tracks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How much flow does that, a building like that, add?
Well, you can, I'm sure we can figure it out, but basically, every dwelling is going to give you between 300 and 400 gallons per day. And do you know how the number of buildings?
92, isn't it? 92?
Right. So...
23,000 gallons.
Yeah.
There you go. Yeah.
And in rough numbers, we have, you know, 600,000 gallons of excess capacity.
So we could have another Sheldon or two, but still not...
Not even worried about it.
And that does not swap.
Right. And then, there's another part to this, which you've heard of. Charles has told you, you've heard about this, the INI reduction program. So you're out there fixing the pipes in the street to reduce leaks, and that's going to reduce the flow of the treatment plant, right? So, you know, so your average day flow might actually go down.
With the INI, we already see the difference in the flow rate has decreased.
Yeah, you see it. You see the benefit of it, right?
So that's like covering up the vents holes and...
Yeah, and infiltration groundwater, infiltrating the pipes, vent holes and the other type of structure.
Yeah.
That's why we did the other projects, Charles, the cast-in place lineup and the main replacement.
Right. So, you know, even looking ahead 20, 40 years, you have enough capacity. So, that affects a lot of things in terms of size of tanks, size of pumps. So, and then there's the average day flow capacity, and then there's peak flow capacity. So, peak flow is 4 NGD. Right? You can take 1.8 NGD, you know, for an entire month straight. But you could take 4 NGD for one day, right? That's a big, that's a big Super Bowl day. All right, so, the... This little mess here, it's a lot of tanks with a lot of different colors going on there. It's really what does, like I said, these two trickle filters do half the treatment. Well, the other half has to happen here. And so, the terms we use is we remove the BOD here, but you have to remove the, which is biosphloxin demand, so we measure how dirty wastewater is. So after you remove the BOD, you have to remove the ammonia. And that's what's happening here in these tanks. So, the challenge there is that you have an existing tank, existing configuration, and the more you modify, the more it costs, right? So that's the exercise we went through. So, one alternative to building more tanks is to do more in the same tank. And basically what it is, is we're going to introduce media, floating media inside the tank. So now you have more, we use the technical term bugs. So the bugs treat the wastewater, right? They eat, bugs eat the wastewater and produce clean water. So you have to give room for the bugs to live. So, right now, you have the size of the tanks, and that's how many bugs you can have. If you throw a bunch of media in there, and the media, if you look at it, it'll look like a wiffle ball. You know, like a practiced golf ball type stuff. So, not only is the media, the bugs floating in there, they're also attaching to the media. So now you can have more bugs in the same amount of space, which allows you to do more treatment in the same tanks.
Does the media float or is it at all layers?
Well, it would sink if you let it sink. However, in order to keep all these bugs alive and happy and heating up, we blow air into the tanks and we keep them completely mixed. So, anyway, so if you bought them, if you bought them the wastewater plant today, you would see a giant mixer stirring the wastewater tank, chocolate brown color sludge going on in there. So those, again, it's all technology, the most efficient way to mix. So we're going to go with what we call fine bubbly filters, which so you can, again, feed more bugs in the small amount of space, going to be more efficient.
Low energy cost as compared to the mixers that we have in place now, those large motors.
So basically, you're doing a lot of things so you can treat more in the same space, right? In order to treat more, you have to introduce more air. And so you do that by having more efficient diffusing system, more efficient blowers, and you do that by adding the media. One of the other big challenges in here, this is really getting to wastewater burden, I guess, is the clarifiers, which is after the aeration tanks, the sludge has to settle. The good sludge, the bugs, has to settle and let the clean water go. So the clarifiers that are built into the plant are very small. So, this is the other advantage, we're using the floating media inside the aeration tanks. By having the floating media, we can treat more and keep the same size clarifiers. After that, it goes back into the eau de l'air, and then it gets pumped again through what's UV disinfectioning. And the UV disinfection was recently completely redone by JCO. So actually, the village, you know, the village spent money to fix it, but saved a lot of money by having it done essentially in-house. And then the air goes to the tube earlier.
A rarity plant where instead of going to the river and then we lose it, it flows into some retention pond, so when there's a drought, in a way, we get to reuse our sewage water. When it goes back to groundwater, we suck it up in our well.
All of these things are possible in that, right? For example, there's a treatment plant up in Lake George. And in Lake George, you're not allowed discharge wastewater from the George, right? Did you have sewage settled? We had to, the treated water had to be infiltrated into the ground instead of piped out. However, we have to irrigate soils, and there's a lot of other things to go with it.
So this would really fit here.
You need large area, soils, yeah. I mean, we have the technology to treat water to clean water state, right?
Toilet to tap.
Yeah, except, right? I mean...
Through a cleaning system.
Yeah, you can absolutely do that, but, you know, it takes a little, it takes a leap of faith to go that way.
That's as good as frozen ice, huh?
So actually, if you, if you expanded this picture, you would see your wells are upstream. Right? So your drinking water comes out, and then your sewage water gets down, you know, gets to the stream. Which is the very typical way of a...
Then I guess I'm on water, is it?
Right.
There you go. So...
It's like we're drinking Harren, it's like flowing right in the fridge with alcohol.
Please for sharing.
So, right.
Thanks, Ed.
It's all exciting, right?
Drinking water.
And there'll be some other miscellaneous upgrades, you know, that are needed. There might be some doors and that kind of stuff, you know, just because you, you know, you get a 40-year-old door that's rusty, you can't open it, you're not going to spend $99,000 on that type of door.
Are you going to do anything with the beautiful water fountain outside? Our water feature there?
Yeah, that's very unique, actually.
Is it? What is that for?
So...
Why is that there?
That's kind of like the proof in the pudding kind of thing, right?
Oh, because it's clear?
That's the final water.
Ah, is that the point of this show?
So soon as...
Now I know what it is, I just didn't know why it's there.
So soon as you walk in, you, that's clean and looking good, everything's, everything's happening.
And it's improved, it's improved significantly, just with what JCO's done.
Yeah, yeah, that was part of the whole process of getting DEC to buy in to modifying the consent order, to get you another three years, and like giving you a time to rethink a new solution, was that you had gone through the process of fixing the plant, you know? Yeah, the operational excellence program.
See, initially, I'm sorry, for interrupting, but initially, when they evaluated the plant, the initial basis of design and the additional final design, I believe, they were basing that design on an inoperable plant.
Right.
They didn't have all of these operations running to its fullest at the operation that it should be running at, and that's how they designed the plant. They didn't even have a good baseline to develop a new, a good plan, a viable plan, which we did. And that's how it all came to be, and the DEC had to say, "I know we went over this numerous times." The DEC recognized that in an operational excellence plan, in conjunction with everyone involved from your company and our village, and now said, you know, "Why developing this plan with a true baseline and operation that we know should work, and then bring you onboard makes it even that much better?" And they recognized that and agreed with us.
Right.
And extended the consent order, kept the, kept the, the levels disingluent, not the levels.
The interim levels.
The interim levels.
Discharge levels.
Right, the discharge levels. So they recognized the hard work that we're doing, and at the same time, we were, we got the grant awarded to us. So it's just a win-win situation here now, as opposed to where, what direction we were going before.
I have a question. Obviously, we worked in compliance, let's say, before, and that's why this all went down. But with all the operational excellence, how close are we to compliance without even doing the assessment?
We're in compliance, in the interim limits, I believe. Charles, I don't know if you can speak to that point, but with the interim limits that we have now, we're in compliance?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, for the most part, we might have a hiccup here and there, but those interim limits have been reduced because of our consent order. Once we get out of the consent order, we're...
They go back to what they're supposed to be.
Right. I think even we're meeting some of the standards without the consent order.
And there are grade changes as well, most of them?
No, so the grade of the plants, which just drives the license out of the operators, would stay the same.
It would?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that actionable? Yeah?
Yeah.
It would stay 4A?
You know, we talked about things you could do to make it a 3A.
Right.
But, you know, you need some direction from the board if that's what you want to do. The biggest thing you could do, and it goes around a little bit, is to add a little digestion.
But we don't want to deviate now.
So, right, yeah.
We can't deviate now. Right.
So, because you get points for everything you do.
Right.
Yeah.
So the more thing you do with the plant, the higher the rating. So if you eliminate some of the stuff you do, it's possible.
I think we owe them a good direction. So we got, what, nine, okay, so with this nine-year-old project, we got some help from the grants. Still got, you know, roughly seven. Are there other operational efficiency savings, like will the day-to-day operation costs go down with some of these upgrades?
So, there's, the energy net usage should go down, because you'll have more efficient equipment to, you know, treat the same stuff. There's, we've talked about some other things that could be done. Again, the digestors, which is kind of, there could be another topic. They could save the money.
So just some, you know, ongoing maintenance work, because things break a lot and said, you know...
For example, you asked the question, are we meeting permit debt, right? So you're, so the plant, the guys at JCO and the village employees, they got the plant running, they're meeting all the limits, and then the mixer here, or the clarifier mechanism there, breaks down, right? And in order to fix it, they got a drain tank, it in there, and now you're violating the limit again because something broke down, right? And then, because it's biology, when we fix it and put it back in place, it takes about two weeks to 30 days to get back to where you were. So when something happens, something breaks down, means you violated a limit, that means you're going to violate it, you know, for the next 30 days, basically.
And it's just a different, so you know, there's different protocols in place of when you test, how often you test. So if you happen to test right before the failure, you're still in the consent.
Right.
Yeah, you know what I mean? So there's just so many variables in regards to testing and being in compliance.
Now, there's one other piece, which might tie into the earlier presentation. And obviously, this wastewater plant was affected by flooding. And when you do an upgrade like this, like I said, it has to be, everything has to be upgraded three feet above 100-year flood. And it's an important distinction, though, it's the 100-year flood, not the historical flood. So...
It was pretty historical.
Those are different numbers.
It was pretty darn historical.
Because we've been upgrading plants that have experienced what is really a 500-year flood, you know? So...
Now 500-year flood comes every 20 years?
Yeah, that's the problem, right, that this is changing. That this is changing.
So is there any, you talked about just storm recovery funding there. Was there any effect here that maybe...
So, right, so this yellow building, which is where you dry your sludge, you have to get your pumps in there, that's where you take your sludge from liquid, you squeeze it out, and it comes out drying, and it goes in the truck, goes in the house, just a little bit. So that is where the electrical equipment that got flooded out. And so that's six below that premium.
Yeah, that was there.
Yeah. So if the storm recovery money wasn't enough to fix that, that's still a problem, right? So the thought is, when we build this headworks building, that the controls that needed to be moved could be installed there. And then, and we, it's hard to tell here, but the elevation everywhere the headworks building is is much higher than the sludge press. So you'd be able to put that M C C there and, you know, kill two birds with one stone.
Any of the projects that we looked at with the New York Rising money, wasn't even denting what needed to happen here. And it would be sort of a Band-Aid to fix maybe half of this, but the other half still would be inefficient and not working. So it didn't make sense to fix, what, we're looking at storm, storm doors and...
Hardening of the nation, where everybody...
None of it was gonna be good enough to make a difference for the whole entire thing. So it just didn't make sense to put any money towards that.
Yeah, the way you prioritize it makes a lot of sense.
Just didn't work.
Yeah.
Would there be any opportunity to install solar panels on roofs of the new building? And would there be any grant money from New York State to install solar panels?
You can definitely do solar panels. And nowadays, every time you do an upgrade, you have to see whether there's any opportunities to do green infrastructure. And solar panels is the first thing that comes to mind. So that, the potential for grants, additional grants, is possible. But what happens typically is that offsets the cost of installing it, so that it makes it a wash, right? But then you get the benefit of generating electricity, so...
So the cost of operating the plant would be less because the electricity is generated there?
Yeah. So the big, if you did like an energy outage wastewater plant, which is common nowadays to most large facilities, is your gas, that's the biggest, that's the little light fruit. You use, you use a lot of natural gas where facilities with digestion are supposed to make natural gas. And then the natural gas that you make, you're actually flaring, right?
Can that be saved and reused instead?
You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of ifs, ands, and buts, right?
There is a process in place that that can be done, that would be a question, yeah.
In other words, right now, we're flaring it, you know? But how much is that? How much is there, and is it a beneficial amount to make use of?
Right, that's the, that's the problem, right? Yes, yes, there's gas, but is it enough to drive a turbine? You need to drive, basically, be a generator that's driven by the gas produced at the wastewater plant, right? And that's how you, that gain on that. So as it stands right now, just, you know, just a quick look at it, there wasn't enough gas to justify bringing a generator to do it, right? However, you're still paying a quick chunk of money every month for to buy gas, to heat the digesters, and you're flaring the gas you're making, right?
So solar panels would be more cost-effective than collecting the gas and having a generator?
So solar panels would be kind of, you know, so you look at this, you got two big flat roofs, right? We might be adding a third. So it'll be, it'll be a natural thing that should be explored and incorporated into this, you know, without doubt. And actually, the way the program works, and that's one of the priorities of the grant we talked about earlier.
Yeah, just to get it clear, that the electricity is not firing the digester boilers that's creating the use of the gas. Natural gas that we are using to fire the boil, that's what we're using to fire the boilers. And right now, the process is not enough to be able to fire those boilers, even though there could have been a design to do that. But the way the boilers were designed was designed so that the gas that was produced wasn't enough. And then to build a storage tank, a collection, to be able to use that gas, as I understood from the last conversation, everything you stored for a month would be used up within about an hour, if anything. So, and it was a much too expensive proposition to try to do that.
But it is one of those buzzwords nowadays, you know, buy the gas and...
And they do work in some sewer plants. The county sewer plant runs entirely off of methane that's produced from the, from the digesters. Which is too small.
You're, you're, we said you're 1.2 M G D minimum daily flow. But studies have shown that a five M G D plant is kind of, is kind of a cutoff, where it works, right? I mean, obviously, there's a range, right? But you're significantly below the five right now. So to make it work, what do you do? Attract higher waste flow from other places to come to the plant? That's a pretty big, you know, if. We couldn't do that now because you're in the consent order. But anyway, that's, that's quite a project on its own.
Could the gas be used to power any natural gas type vehicles, like any of your...
Well, like Michael was saying, the first use of that gas should be used internally. So you need gas to heat the digesters. So the gas should be self-sustaining.
But it's not.
But it's not. So there's not even enough to be self-sustaining.
I was gonna say, could it be used for something different rather than burning?
Well, some wastewater plants...
There you go.
Yeah, some wastewater plants have done that. They've, they've, they store, they, you know, clean the gas, store it, and they use it like propane, you know, in some places to install propane vehicles. You know, they blow in propane vehicle?
That sort of thing.
Yeah.
But it's too small for that to be cost-effective?
Right, because you have to then invest in a vehicle that can use propane, and you have to use it enough, right?
You have to get the storage facility, you have to be able to clean the gas.
This is a bug.
Yeah, yeah, and by storage, they're typically very large bubbles. You know, you can imagine like a forty-foot diameter bubble, you know? And you need to clean the gas that it's good enough to use. And then the media that's used to scrub the gas is expensive, you gotta replace it every once in a while.
Build another plant.
So...
Play, build another plant.
You know where fireworks.
No, because you don't have to. Oh.
So I think the effort should be to just, you know, use the gas you have, to heat the digesters. The more you do that, that's then the last gas you buy, then the last gas you waste, right?
Oh, so there is a way to float hard back in, you're saying?
There's, yeah, I mean, the... Yeah, right now, you have a very large boiler, and there's not enough gas to just by itself, so you got to feed both.
Yeah, there is a way to do that, to do a...
There's a way to do both, huh? There's, there's things that have to be figured out, yeah. I expect it's complicated, I guess. All of which need to be figured out, and it's a matter of whether it's worth it.
And in your opinion, it's just too little bit of gas that you bring in?
Yeah, so the other, the other side of it, if you take that discussion whole, you know, right? Is the benefit of a digester is to reduce the volume of sludge, right? That's where the digestive work comes from, because you're literally reducing the volume of sludge. And the benefit of reducing the volume of sludge is because you reduce the cost of disposal, right? Or you don't have a cost for disposal. So you don't have that benefit of reducing the volume. So then the natural question comes, should I digest? So maybe I shouldn't be producing gas at all. So maybe it's just, you know, hold it, process it, send it to the compost facility. Some of these are operational changes versus capital costs. You know, type decisions.
So for the new plant, we're still digesting?
We're, yeah, the digesters were upgraded, what was it, three, four years ago? Home sort plays, publishing stuff, right?
Yeah, we had the first project on the, the secondary was in 2010, and I believe it was 2012, 2013, probably.
Yeah. So that's why there's not a lot of work on there, because it's, but there is fairly recent.
We just finished the installation of digestive boilers, didn't we?
Oh, the boilers.
Boilers, you still remember the digester and conversion and operations and technicals?
We did, yeah.
Same thing in the yellow building, you're completely rid that we did that, the process that drives the sludge. So minus the fact that floods, what's in there is new.
Right, put in those... Heat exchanges and all of that, and the digester building. So we already rebuilt most of the digesters, so that would really remain, we wouldn't replace the digesters and go to a different type of, of process.
So there's a few things that could still, you know, there's hatches and maybe some valves that still need work, right, on the digesters. But that falls under the miscellaneous fixes, you know? As opposed to full-scale digester upgrade or conversion.
So can we just go into the resolution now?
Yeah.
Just wanna... So really, if we go over the resolution authorization, you have it in front of you, right? The amendment, what, right, amendment number two to the professional services post from Delaware Engineering for the Design and Bidding Services. So if you could touch on that a bit, Rob?
Yeah. Like I said, that's our, that's the level of the project right now. D E C has accepted the plan, and so now they're looking for our... Does everybody have a copy of it?
Yep.
I mean, the...
They would send the materials.
Yeah, there's an email, yeah.
But they just had the resolution.
So our scope of work, as you can imagine, is to create a plans and specs, you know? So the estimate's gonna be a little over a hundred drives, spec books, about a hundred pounds. That'll be, you know, for the site work that's there, piping work that's there, that'll be for the headworks building, that'll be to rehabilitate the two triple filters, rehabilitate the two primary clarifiers, convert the intermediate clarifiers to surf stinks, flow meter, aeration lift, aeration tank lift pumps, replace the cat mixers, we'll find multiple system blowers, add the M D D media, floating media, as we mentioned, the waterfalls, the aeration tanks, and everything that goes with it to convert it. Upgrade the interbo clarifiers, whether it's in the water tanks, current valve. And then the other part that's in there is, all this has to be done, and you have to treat the flow every day, all time, also, right? So we have to design it in a way that it can be, tanks can be taken offline, but treatment can still continue, and you're still, you're still expecting to meet permit during construction. Kind of like you get a mulligan on everything, so... So we have to design it and sequence it so that it can be built and maintain treatment.
So temporary tanks gonna go in?
There's gonna be temporary piping, temporary pumps. We're not really temporary tanks, but we have to sequence in which tanks go down, in which order, so that you treat, you know, you maintain the level of treatment. Unfortunately, or fortunately, the operators have a lot of experience with taking the tanks down, fixing things, so we know that which valves work and which valves don't work. And we know who the guys make tanks, because they've got in there to fix things. And then, obviously, there's a lot of electrical and cation work that goes with it. There's the building systems that goes with it. And then everything has to be submitted for the deadlines of the consent order to D E C. And this will get approved, and I can reject it by D E C. And, you know, then we go out to bid. So our services are completed with the bidding. The friends have the plates, documents, spread them out to all the, you know, typical contractors to do this kind of work, answer questions during bidding, review the bids when they come in, then they're making recommendations to award. And all this will be prepared with a big slot, because we have to have multiple prime contractors. So I would guess we're familiar with that, as was mentioned earlier, to set the budget. And everything has to be, basically, branded and funded, necessarily comply with the minority and women-owned business utilization plans. So as it stated in the annual goal is twenty-three percent. So that applies to our contracts as well as to construction contracts. This is part of the... Yeah.
So that would be, that would be in total of amendment to the original agreement. The original agreement, as you can see, was fifteen thousand, went to twenty thousand, you have it here. And now this amended amount of four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for Delaware Engineering, provider of services, and the bidding services.
Right.
Final design and bidding, so that's a bit, right?
That's, that's received.
Right. So that would be the resolution that would be put forward. And as I said, this has been going on for years. And the original design, the basis of the design was flawed, the final design was flawed, it was rejected by the D E C. We put into this whole operation, we brought on Delaware, and the process has been agonizing, and actually, the D E C is recognizing that the plan that they submitted will work, the design they submitted will work for the W D S.
Time constraints, right?
And the time constraints, of course, are still there under the consent order, so we must act.
Is there sufficient time under the consent order to complete the work that's being proposed?
That's all it...
We proposed dates, which we felt would be neat, and those were the dates they accepted. So we've got nothing else to plan but ourselves.
Are we gonna still need, here are the dates that you've given us. We're gonna still need J C O, certainly?
So J C O operates the plant out of any basis, so that'll not go away very well. You mean somebody operates the plant?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, does some of this lead to like a different skill set, or is it, is it comparable to what we have now?
It's comparable to what we have now.
It's the same requirement as for the licensing requirement as a 4A plant.
Right.
So we need the 4A operator. 4A, and if you have a 4A operator, you'll also need a 3A operator.
As an assistant.
Right.
Should we have a copy of J C O's contract? Can I see that?
Copy of J C O's contract.
Well, no, I wouldn't expect that.
Yeah, 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 sure.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Okay. Questions, additional? I was very helpful.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you want to speak to the fact that J C O is actually running the plant now? Reduced cost.
I think they, they spoke to those, J C O presented last...
Oh, it did.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, especially Wes at J C O, and he's been around a long time, a lot of plants, he's seen a lot of things. So like I mentioned earlier, I have a wastewater license, but we're not in the business of operating wastewater plants, we're not impressed with designing one. So we listen to operators, you know? Because they're there every single day, so... And we'll have, we'll bring a presentation for Monday?
Yeah.
So we can, you know, run through it, and argue for it in front of the public. We'll have that ready for you.
Yeah, we'll have a PowerPoint presentation, Mary will be here also, and you know, you guys can digest this.
That's our intense time.
Okay, great, thank you, Rob.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Rob. Okay. Say, what's next? Uh, okay. Is this yours?
Yes.
Alright, so um requesting uh. Application or payment app, payment, uh, authorization for application, payment number seven for Valentine Electric. Thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-one cents is for the South Street Emergency Generator Replacement Project. Requesting authorization uh to solicit bids for the refuse and recycling collection container service area that's up on air in Stone Gate. That uh contract runs out at the end of May this year for. And it's a two-year contract with a one, two-year extension to do what we've been going with. Uh, the last number of years. We requesting authorization, explicit bids for water department chemicals, we do this every year. And uh, the uh. It's uh requested to run from uh June first of twenty-twenty of this year. Through uh May thirty-first of uh next year. So it's, it's coincides with our, our budget cycle. The uh snow and ice agreement, um, here's, they, they made some changes, it's now a five-year agreement. Uh, I had some discussion with the resident engineer in the new city. The dollar amount is less. And um, obviously I questioned that, I'm waiting to hear uh response from um. The person that is actually working on, that represents the, the pairs of snow and ice agreements. What they've done is they've um averaged out the last three years. They've got some other formatting that they're doing, so. Uh, I may or may not have that on the agenda for Monday, because I may or may not have all the answers.
Can you explain to me a little more about what is a snow and ice agreement?
Yeah, yeah, so um we have two state highways that run through suffering. You have uh two oh two and fifty-nine. We provide uh snow and ice, um. You know, for any snow event, we uh, we plant roads, we solve.
In this real versus.
Yes, yeah.
That's not a lot of this for a square mile, a linear miles.
Yeah, lane miles, based on lane miles and um.
So they're offering less, as you were saying.
Yeah, what has happened uh over the years, it's always gone up a little bit, you know, you get a couple hundred dollars, three hundred dollars each year, it goes up a little bit. So for example, uh, the current uh last year, last year was uh nineteen thousand and change. What we're proposing now, and that's why I want to look into it and see what's going on here, is like sixteen thousand. So nineteen to sixteen, that doesn't make any sense. So I, I need to spend a little bit of time trying to find out. And it's a different, different agreement, it's a five-year agreement with. I guess they're trying, what they're trying to do is eliminate some of the paperwork that we've been dealing with every year. So uh, anyway, there are, are some changes that's going on, you know? Okay, next item is, I, I don't have really much information on this, this is due diligence for process, squires, gate storm, recovery properties, uh.
So I had this discussion with Joe, and maybe I just didn't share with you a couple of weeks ago in regards to um. Squires gave the properties that we need to acquire, we need to have them, the, the properties are not ready for us to acquire. Due to the fact that they didn't remove fencing, piping, grating, whatever, and Joe has been, or should be, working on that. Documenting it and taking photographs to make sure that it's in compliance with us being able to receive it. We're not gonna take it if it's, if, if, if there's fencing.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure.
So there's, there's.
Yeah, it was my understanding that they would be maintaining the properties for a period of time, and then there would be the transition over to. So obviously.
Well, they said, they're in that maintaining portion now, and they want to transition to village title, but we don't want to accept title.
Yeah.
In the condition that the property is in there.
Also, Charles, do you know where we are in terms of, um, I think all of the properties have been closed, but not all of them have been demolished, right? There's still.
There are ten that they made a request to terminate utilities. I've uh, I've advised that, that we're not gonna be issuing right-of-way disturbance permits that involve roadway disturbances until April first, so. Yeah, we will issue those permits come April first, and I'm sure it'll start.
And that would be, that would be the final phase?
That's the ones that I'm aware of, yeah, there's ten, there's ten less left, rather. And that's, yeah, all I'm aware of.
Who's doing that one?
Uh, we're out of uh.
The demo.
Ground control, right, is the contractors, or are you asking about the ground control out of Warwick?
Major Tom, I mean.
I'm sorry?
There's Pine Island, right? It's a Pine Island. Pine Island.
They're doing Pine Island.
Yeah, Pine Island, funny.
Yeah, and that's, that's picked by the state, though, I think that's what the.
Well, I see, yeah, you're all, yeah, it's all.
No, I know.
Yeah, it's all bid out.
I just didn't, I wasn't sure of the amount.
Yeah. So another discussion item here is to evaluate the energy efficiency of, or come up with some type of uh tentative design for. The heating syst, heating and air conditioning system in the village wall.
I think the heating portion that you asked.
Yeah, heating, uh, would be a little bit of uh deficiency, you know, most recently. So, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Why would you say that?
Nigel, did you want to speak to that some of this, like you've had.
And I only have tight lines.
It's very interesting, right, with energy efficient?
Well, yeah, I, I guess it looks at two different things, I mean, what is looking at the building as a whole, you know, in terms of uh. Energy efficiency, if you look at the envelope of the building, as Charles will tell you, and then the heating and air conditioning and. How that functions now, and if you were to rewrite it, how you would do it. They also have sometimes tied in with the stuff energy performance contracts, which, you know, some people like, some people don't, but basically companies like Honeywell and other companies will come in. And do a free evaluation and come up with a plan and say, look, if this is what you do to the building. It'll have a payback period that will pay for itself over a very short period of time. But then you have to make sure you maintain that in that level. In other words, if they have heating controls that say it's gonna stay at sixty-five at a certain point in time, but. Like a night it drops down to whatever, and uh you have to maintain the windows in the proper conditions and the doors and so forth. We're obviously dealing with a very old building, with even with whatever improvements were made over the years, even those have aged out.
Yeah, we did have a, our maintenance, a uh heating contractor, he's been in here changing out traps and a couple of pipes and whatnot. He has a, matter of fact, he showed me a cross-section of one pipe, which is solid.
We have old galvanized.
Yeah, and he has got a lot of technology going, and that's up building up in there. Um, I think this might, I mean, we, it's, I guess, character I think won't overdo, and timing might be bad, good now to uh. Try to get something going for the next heating season. Um, of course, funding is always.
And you also have air conditioning.
Yeah, 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 see, that these, yeah, yeah. One option would be, you know, essentially these colds, I mean, the heat pumps and these mini unit, mini split units.
And we look at that.
Yeah, we talked about it, and I think for us, it's kind of been the money, right?
Right.
So um.
Now, Fred's unfortunately not here, but he mentioned there may be grant opportunities that he was gonna mention tonight, but.
Yeah, I think that would be, uh, this, it's gonna be a fairly costly, it's a big building, fairly costly.
At the same time, if you ever upgraded the H V A C system here in the building. And you still have windows that don't open or close, or, you know?
Yeah, the windows are not.
You're putting in a new system and the stuff is going out the window anyways, you know? So it's something that you really have to look at, as Mike said, overall.
Yeah, there are, there are, as you mentioned, there are a lot of windows that are, need to be replaced.
Right, and windows were replaced when nineteen eighty?
Yeah, nineteen eighty, yeah, yeah, early years.
Forty years old.
What year was this built in?
Eighteen twelve, when it was built.
Yeah.
Nineteen twelve.
Twelve years.
This was stuff at high school, nineteen twelve, two hundred years.
My house was built in eighteen eighties.
And the building was, the building was the same, actually, you got the picture, the building was the same.
Yeah.
No, really, outside laws, I was just, I thought your house probably owned it. Okay.
Yes.
This is what it states for, other than we want. Um, while we're discussing heating and air conditioning, our budget for next year was to include about forty-five thousand dollars. For replacement of the boiler with poker ladder.
Right.
Because it is thirty-something years old and we haven't bandied, it's like a bullet hole with a band-aid on it right now.
Right.
Also, the air handler for the air conditioning is a host company, is completely inoperable, we have no air conditioning coming for the summer. So.
That forty-five thousand include both?
Yes. So if we can somehow incorporate this into whatever you're gonna be doing.
Well, this is gonna take uh some time, it sounds like you're a little more urgent, right?
Yeah, I would say it's more urgent.
It's gonna take a bit of time.
And that's gonna be a capital project for you.
Time, uh, it's in the current fiscal budget, or is it recommended project?
It's going into this upcoming budget.
Upcoming.
It wasn't in this current budget, right?
Well, next, next year.
Okay. That's good, thanks for saying.
I see, you don't want. On the opportune time, bring it.
I heard Pauline after saying, and I rolled with it.
Alright, you're welcome, thank you.
Alright, so next time, uh, the, uh, to accept the resignation of Alex Harper, Labor in the State Department. Uh, I do have, Joe and myself.
What's the name?
Harper.
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 Harper. Okay, so it's.
H A L P O.
It's right on, doesn't it? Those is another pun.
Oh, man, this is making us laugh.
Um, we did interview a couple of candidates, um, I would like to uh. Hire Paul Russo, who's uh, who's this vacant labor's position. He is a suffer resident. And he's been active uh in, you know, uh, suffer Little League, and has some uh. You know, he seems to be a good candidate.
So you did an interview, everybody was pleased with the.
Yeah, yeah, and um, you know, it was, um, you know, he, he did seem, you know, filled with the requirements they were looking for.
Right.
You know, he's, he's a local guy, uh, that has an interest in. Been working for the village, and I think you'd fit in, fit in well.
So you would be looking for that approval on Monday?
I would, because Alice is gonna be leaving, we can get her to start right after that.
Oh, gee.
Yeah.
Does Joanne have the application?
Yes.
That's all approved.
Yeah, she had, yeah, actually, that's where I got it from. Um, now, there's one, one other thing that I thought I was on, um. Fred's agenda, this is that, the B line, so uh, I'm not sure what he was gonna discuss. What I'd like to do there is um, to get this project moving, is to go out and uh, to develop an art, professional service R F P. For uh, the design and uh. For that particular project, being a grant project, we serve protocols we have to follow. Um, I do have, I think we're probably looking at professional services, less than ten thousand dollars or so, ten, twelve thousand dollars for that particular project. Uh, we would wanna look at, uh, you know, some of the drainage uh aspects and deficiencies that we have there. Um, and once we have uh. A set of documents, then we can obviously go off the bids and, you know, get, get the project started. So that's what we asked you for Monday, it would be able to solicit R F P uh for the design.
You have a budget line for that, Charles?
Uh, no, I, no, I don't, uh, I, I don't think we've done anything yet with that, right? In terms of that project, I'm not sure I'm.
Well, no, that project isn't even on books because it wasn't uh.
Yeah.
The grant wasn't, we weren't ready to do it, remember, that was um.
Well, do we, I mean, I told you we were, and we wanted to pursue it, or?
Oh, you received the grant, how much of the grant, what were you awarded?
I believe so.
Seventy, eight thousand, five thousand, something? Yeah, but there was a big question, it was about how much was that project going to cost? And then how much of the grant was gonna be able to finance it, and were we going to finance the remainder of it? Remember, I, I remember we had these discussions at a workshop, a board meeting, um, a while back. And so that, that was one, like the parking, when we went out for the parking bonds, the, the parking issue. Uh, what was included was everything but that law.
Parking lot.
Right.
Because, yes, because that, the, the numbers weren't solidified at that point. And there was a big difference between the original estimate and what the newer estimate came out with, if I remember correctly. And then there was a question of how much financing was available through grants and so forth that would help to finance that. Uh, there was a lot of questions about that, too.
Right. I was gonna present that, give us an update as to the second part of the grant, because we got one grant, and then there's a subsequent grant that we need.
But we did hold off that a month, I mean, you know?
Well, it's just a matter of, I mean, before we authorize spending money on a, we don't have any money.
Yeah, okay, so we'll hold off, we'll hold off until next month.
You know, if, if it's a ten thousand dollar allocation that the, the board wants to take out a contingency to um finance that project. You know, we.
Right.
They could do that.
Alright, let's talk a little bit more about it, and let's see what Fred has to say, and then we'll see.
Uh, and then uh. Here, I just wanted to get some good news, Aris Morris passes two A test.
Three A.
Two A.
Two A.
Two A.
Two A, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
He wanted to say three A.
Yeah, so he passed, it just took him Saturday, he's uh, he's quite happy, and what's quite happy for him. Um, just to, just, you know, to add to that discussion that um, he is now looking to, um, he has enough experience uh to sit for. The three A class, and what's involved there is uh, some fees associated with um. A class and a test, I think totals probably less than two hundred and fifty dollars or something, I believe it is, so. Um, I know it's, you know, wasn't on the agenda for tonight, we'll just toss it out there. Uh, Mary, did you wanna?
Right, like, you know, if, if the board has just trussed it to put it on the agenda for Monday night, and uh, you know, I think it's a hundred and forty dollars. I believe, he told me, for a hundred and forty, you think it's a little more?
Well, I think there was, I thought there was two fees, one was like a hundred and five, maybe the other one's a hundred and forty.
Oh, maybe that's what.
So maybe so, I, I kinda think it was two fifty, I don't get the exact amount.
Right.
You know, we talked quickly.
So we show them the dedication for the.
Yeah, 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 he's good, he's.
I think you should definitely, because then we're gonna have to have somebody else as a three A license.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and then, yeah, Phil Durick and Harris are, are doing a, a great job, they're really, um, you know, stepped up, they have stepped up for a course of time, so. Um, I think that is it for me, uh, any questions?
Alright, thanks.
Uh, so Mayor of Board, I guess one of the first things, uh, we did sell our bonds, we were going to close on those refunding bonds on February sixth. They sent an email to the board members in there. The savings over the life of those bonds are gonna be three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, approximately thirty thousand dollars a year. We actually got a rate of a total interest, a true interest cost rate of one point two seven percent, which was excellent. So we're refunding the two thousand seven, two thousand twelve bonds with that. We also got out our um ten ninety fours, ten ninety fives, which are the forms for the Affordable Care Act. Uh, which is the earliest we've ever gotten them out, but we've got it down to science how that program may or may not be existing anymore, Affordable Care Act. But at least we complied with what we had to do. So those are the two things, what, what we have, the only item we actually have, we have of substance is the attorney bills, which the board had requested that prior to. Uh, payment, that the board review and approve them for payment. So uh, currently we have them listed as an account. So currently, we have them listed as an account payable, but nothing being done with them until such documents the board reviews and approves. And one note is that.
There's one document that's missing that I need to provide you with, that's going to be further discussion, and I don't have to get with.
And the only other thing, we may need to have a budget transfer to cover some of the costs, because the attorney costs are getting to the end of the budget, so.
One of these wasn't on the email, this, this one from twenty-second, this is a.
That's what we got today.
There's been more reasons.
The email I sent out was just simply that they were going to be on the agenda.
I'm sorry, they were in the agenda packet, you had some of these.
One we included with the material, one we got today, so I copied it and have it ready for review for next week.
What's their payment terms? Are they on receipt, or are they in that thirty days, or it's a payment terms?
I would assume that thirty days, like anyone else.
Okay.
We pay our bills every two weeks, so whoever goes in the hopper for a payment, let's say now, would be paid, I'm trying to remember, we had payroll last week, but we make our vendor payments every two weeks.
So we'd be looking for authorization on Monday to pay these through the voices?
Yes, yes.
With the budget adjustment?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I owe you a document also.
Yes, thank you.
Proceed. Anybody? Steve, I was going to ask you, I mean, we just mean, you asked about, you're all the time, successful all the time. The, does the, was that addressed in the CSEA agreement? That, I can't remember the guy's name, just came to.
I don't think that was, I don't, I think the statement, what was the statement that he made, Steve?
That I made, I was just, there seemed to be quite a lot of overtime.
All right, I checked into it under regards, too, and thank you, that was year to date, all the time, and it was to the whole of the pump, and it wasn't to one individual.
I might have spread that.
That's exactly what it was. But you could follow up with, if you'd like, with, um, Lynn.
That's who I spoke to, was probably last month.
There were some, we did, that may, that particular one may have been in the department, I may have misread it. I know there were several individuals that didn't seem to have quite a lot of overtime.
Right, okay.
Which is about what should be addressed.
Okay, Community Foundation, the CSEA Village of Suffering, and the Code Drive is.
Bruce is here.
He is there. Right, Bruce, Bruce did a great job, along with the CSEA, for the Suffering Coat Drive. We collected, I don't know how many coats, sweaters, blankets, gloves, and socks, which will be distributed to needy families throughout the Village of Suffering. So we did a great job, thank you, Bruce, a lot of, a lot of time went into that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for spearheading it.
And the CSEA did another fabulous job, which they always do, step in, up and helping the community. Next, we have.
Now, one of the things we did talk about for that is that perhaps Bruce can talk about the Community Foundation's ideas and rules on Monday, right?
On Monday.
We've discussed that, okay.
Since I'm barely conscious now, let's do it Monday.
So at this time, I'm going to request another executive session at Monday's meeting to discuss the wholesale real property. Request for another public hearing to be held March second.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor? I apologize for the interruption. Would it be possible to just address the executive session question very briefly?
No, not at this time, because we'll be discussing it in, in, in executive session on Monday.
You're going to have an executive session on Monday to discuss the setting of the executive.
I'm going to call for an executive session on Monday.
Okay.
For the discussion.
So, our request is.
I'm sorry, but.
Uh, sorry, Stephen Rayburn, McCalla Littlever, and Stadler.
Stephen, Bill.
Rayburn, I'm here on behalf of Alon.
Okay.
Uh, just to reiterate the letter that our office submitted to you all yesterday, just because you have an executive session does not preclude you from placing us on the agenda for a public discussion and possibly.
It does when the, it, it does. It doesn't necessarily mean that someone who submits a letter gets automatically put on the agenda.
Of course not.
Right.
But we're just responding as quickly as we could to what we found out late on Friday afternoon, and we are just requesting again that if the board does wish to have an executive session, please don't necessarily rule out a public discussion or a potential adoption of a resolution. We'll be there Monday night, we'll be happy to answer any questions that may come up in the executive session. Certainly, we can address the new terms, contract of sale, we believe makes this a more attractive deal to the village and to the board of education.
Will we be discussing all of those, those options in the executive session?
Yes.
On Monday, we will, I will.
Yes, of course, and then afterwards, if you have questions, we would be there, and we would still ask that perhaps after the executive session, you would come out and we could be heard at a public discussion for a potential consideration of adoption of the resolution for the pilot for real. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Do you want to go over that?
Yeah, Amy, go over, go over, see, please. Oh, that's the grant exemption for the veteran's exemption. So, item C on the request for a public hearing to be held March second, at seven ten, from men local law four of twenty eighteen, clarifying chapter two forty-four, forty-six A, grant exemption, that pertains to Cold War vet exemptions that we adopted in twenty eighteen. There seems to be a flaw in the local law that we adopted, which everyone adopted based on the town's recommendation, so just passing, we've got a little bit more information in regards to it.
Right, so back in twenty eighteen, we adopted a local law that was based on a template that the state used that was recommended therefore by the town of Ramapo as the assessing department to address the tax exemption for Cold War veterans. However, in the implementation of the local law, so if you notice, I've kind of given you the history. This is what our law says. Then you have the town of Ramapo, the local law number six of two thousand nineteen, that's their amended law, and then you have a proposed amended law for the Village of Suffering. So if you go back to the local law from two thousand eighteen, and you go to section two forty-four dash forty-six, grant of exemption, then you go to item A, the model policy that everybody adopted, so this is something that's just new for us, it's throughout the state. If you adopted it just the way it was written, A was actually a question, not a statement, so.
From the legal A, the qualifying residential real properties shall be exempt from taxation to the extent of either one or two.
You can't have both.
Can't have both, so we adopted.
Both.
Both, along with the town.
So what you're seeing now is, once this error was brought to the attention of the municipalities, the municipalities had to go through another public hearing process to determine were they going to pick one or two. So we were advised by the town of Ramapo, who had just completed the process, that they went with option two, the fifteen percent of the assessed value of such property. So if you look in the town of Ramapo's, that's what it reflects under grant exemption, and if you look in the proposed for the Village of Suffering, that's narrowing what the town of Ramapo has. But the public hearing and the discussion for the board is, do you want to go with what the town of Ramapo was suggesting? Or do you want to go with option one?
Option, option two is the maximum allowed by law, and that's what we were, we based our decision on in eighteen, was the maximum, but this was.
It didn't codify it, yes.
It didn't codify it at all.
At all.
But when we did adopt, we adopted the Cold War vet exemption at the maximum rate.
And that's what the town of Ramapo has reiterated in their resolution.
Right.
That was their intent as well, too.
So once again, it's for me to express it, for veteran's exemption, you should consider a maximum exemption for our veterans.
So the resolution in front of you is just authorizing the public hearing to be held in the next month to discuss it.
Now, this exemption specifically addresses Cold War veterans. How does it compare to the exemption for other veterans?
There's numerous different exemptions for veterans, based on war status, Cold War status, disabilities. Some apply to schools, some apply to just the municipality, there's just a, there's a host of different ones. This one applies for the Cold War veterans.
Yeah, so if you go to the code of the Village of Suffering under taxation, the different categories are listed.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, anybody got any questions on that? As you know, the, the young ladies from the high school for the climate smart community pledge, we'd like to move forward with that pledge. If anyone has any additional questions to it.
Does the board, can we pull the climate of the board? Because if we do adopt the smart communities pledge, then the high school would like to be here on Monday, and I didn't schedule them to come until I felt, I mean, will we go.
So would we be inclined to? Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Great.
So they'll be here as part of the presentation.
Thank you. Next resolution will be authorizing the Village of Suffering to participate in our county municipal shared services and evaluation agreement. If you have any discussion with that.
Can you tell me what it is?
It's an agreement that was mandated by the governor's office to all counties and states in New York to come up with a, with a shared services program. So they convened all local officials, identified ways to save money, to identify shared services to, share any services throughout the village, throughout the county, such as lime striping, they talked about consolidation of wastewater treatment plants, there's just a host of different options, use of different vehicles and trucks, if it's a cost savings. Those cost savings would be reimbursed by the governor's office to this valley that found the savings, or utilized the savings. And Mayor, if I may, we can always piggyback on the county contract, but what this does is allow us, if we wanted to, for instance, if we're wanting chemicals for the water plant, wastewater plant, or asphalt, anything like that, we could submit our needs to the county, the county could go out to bid, putting in those quantities to perhaps obtain even better pricing, and then we'd be eligible to buy from that contractor at that pricing. But we're not going to be required to do so, so it's a completely open-ended agreement that is.
Yeah, and then you share in the savings, so like if you, if you would have, if you did better under this than you would have done on your own, then you're sharing the savings. But you have to participate, you have to have the resolution to participate.
Are there meetings that go along with that, seeing how everybody's up to?
Meetings went on throughout the year. Yeah, I believe also they require that either the treasurer, in my case, like CFO or somebody else is assigned as the contact, point of contact for the county as they discuss different needs and so forth.
We just had the final meeting.
Yeah, I think it goes to the mayor and CFO.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll have meetings, yeah, from time to time, yeah, Paul Bergman, who's the county.
There's several of these that we have participated in, this is just for the camera.
Yeah, this is, yeah. Next is the resolution authorizing Mayor to sign an agreement with town around Hope for the use of the town around Hope Police firing range, which we do every year. Next resolution authorizing myself and Amy Papmore to defend an ICOM legislative meeting for city and village officials, February ninth through eleven, in Albany, New York. That's through NITE home. Next resolution appointing Beyonce Tipolite.
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 Mm-hmm.
As parking enforcement eight-part time, looks like a great individual to come in and fill that, that position. He's a four-and-a-half-year army veteran at the same time, and his salary would be at fifteen dollars an hour, which is still.
It's an issue, we're going to.
We're going to work through that in the executive session. Authorize, next order, authorize Sacred Heart Church to hold a procession of the cross on Mount Union to be held Friday, April tenth, twenty twenty, because of the thirty year.
Correct, yeah. We're working on it all right in the Friday.
And then Saturday is the one. And then Saturday you have the parade on the half, right?
No.
I think that's the Friday, that's the parade is played before.
Saturday is the, and then this is Friday, so Saturday.
Oh, that's before and after, okay.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, yeah.
Okay, that, and then that one, it's Easter Sunday, duh.
If they make, make a motion to go on to an executive session, for this person, no matter who, it's a wonderful person.
Yeah, I started bringing it to you.
Excuse me, well, Roger, Mike, trust me, Alperk, thank you, Mike, I'll be getting that document tomorrow.
Thank you, Mayor, good night, everybody.
Night, Bruce.
Thank you, Mayor, Paul Jerron, Tracy Jerron, all in favor of my comment, okay.
Can I ask if, it's my understanding that this is a discussion and won't be, you won't be resulting in coming and making a decision?
Correct.
Should I stay for the adjournment or not?
Sure. Now, we have a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn second.
Second.
Is it recording?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, have a nice evening, what's left of it.